In 2023 City Commission Meeting, I apologize for the delay. There were a number of items that we had to take care of this afternoon that the meeting lasted longer than expected. For those of you who are here for the first time, just like to welcome you and to let you know that our format is that we begin our meetings with a pledge of allegiance. We take a roll call, and there are no presentations tonight. Normally presentations are intended to recognize events, people, or activities that are taking place in our community. So except for Christmas, Hanukkah is behind us, Kwanzaa is ahead of us. So those are the holidays we have to look forward to. So those are the announcements tonight. So if I could all ask you to please rise and join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in my heart.
In this holiday season, we have so much to be thankful for and a lot to think about. And so if you could please join me in this moment of silence. Thank you. Mr. Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Commissioner Herbst?
Present.
Commissioner Glassman?
Here.
Commissioner Sternman?
Here.
Mayor Trent Talis?
Here.
And then a motion for the vice mayor.
Yes, I'm about to do that, thank you.
Just checking.
I'm not as seen as I look.
Now, that would be beautiful.
No, that would be beautiful.
Do I hear a motion to approve the Vice Mayor being able to participate in tonight's meeting remotely?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Seconded.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sterman?
Yes.
Mayor Trent Talis?
Yes, and welcome, Vice Mayor.
Thank you so much, thank you.
We have one agenda announcement, CM2. The applicant has asked that that item be removed from tonight's agenda, so do I now hear a motion to approve the minutes and the agenda as amended?
Give me one minute, Mr. Mayor, I just want to wonder if we can...
Did you ask for pulls yet?
I'm sorry?
Did you ask for pulls of consent yet?
No, we're not up to that yet.
Okay, good, thanks.
We're not up to that yet. I just, before you do that, could we change the order of one thing here?
Which is that?
Let me see which is the one. I wonder if we could delay, just the order, R4, until after we do the resolution regarding that same topic. R8, rather, my mistake, R8.
What do you want to do there? What did you want to do there?
No, no, excuse me, I have it backwards. The motion for the contract, for the BDO, I think it makes more sense if we do the resolution first and then do the BDO contract after, probably...
I think that's M9.
Thank you. Okay, so we'll take up M9 after we do R8, is that what you're asking?
Yeah, I think that would make more sense.
Okay, that's fine.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. All right, did we vote on the minutes and the, okay, so, please, did someone make them...
No.
Okay, so will someone please move to approve the minutes and the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Seconded.
Been moved and seconded, please call the roll.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sterman?
Yes.
Mayor Trent Talis?
Yes, and the minutes and the amended agenda are now approved. So at this point, we now move into our consent agenda items. I ask each member of this commission if they have any consent agenda items they'd like to have pulled, and we'll consider and vote on them separately. Otherwise, we will vote on all of them together. If there's a consent agenda item that you're here for, that you feel you need to speak on, that has not been pulled, please let me know before we vote, and I'll be very happy to let you speak on that agenda item. So Commissioner Herbst, do you have any consent agenda items you'd like pulled?
No, Mayor.
Vice Mayor, do you have any consent agenda items you'd like pulled?
None.
Okay, Commissioner Glassman?
CM9.
And is that it?
Yes, thank you.
And Commissioner Sterman?
CR2.
CR2. So CM9 and CR2 have been pulled. Let's see. Questions only... So Maggie Hunt, Maggie, are you here? You're just here to support that item? Okay. Did you want to speak on it? Okay, so, when, we'll, we'll, we'll call it up separately since Commissioner Sterman pulled that. So except for CM9 and CR2, do I hear a motion to approve all the consent agenda items?
Moved.
Seconded.
Been moved and seconded, please call the roll.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sterman?
Yes.
Mayor Trent Talis?
Yes, and all those consent agenda items are now approved. If you're here on those items and you'd like to leave, nice knowing you, but we'd of course love to see you have the opportunity to see the rest of the meeting, and Will Spencer seems to be the only person leaving, so I just want to point that out. Take care, Will. Okay, CM9, Commissioner Glassman?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So I have a question for staff about this item, if maybe Laura's the best person to answer. So Mayor, this is just a, obviously, this was deferred from our last meeting, this is to authorize payment of attorney fees to Fort Lauderdale Food Not Bombs from being, when we were sued in 2014. Obviously, this is way before this commission or even the commission prior, but Laura, I have a question for you.
To whom are you directing that?
Laura, she's coming right up. So we're being asked to pay attorney's fees in this case for $638,196. Are we able to ascertain what our city spends on homeless-related expenditures in a year?
Yes, Commissioner, I'm trying to pull that up. So the total spending for the year is around $14 million. Of that, around 12.2 million is grant funds, and the remaining would be general fund, 1.8 million.
How much are rent funds?
Grant.
Grant funds.
Grant funds, how much are they?
So around $12.2 million in grant funds related to homelessness or housing-related initiatives to prevent homelessness.
So those are from other government agencies?
Yes.
Is there a match that we spend on those grant funds?
So the ones that we identified were primarily related to entitlement funds from the federal government. So yeah, the city matches with admin costs and things like that for those programs.
Okay, so, you know, it's interesting, in the six years that I've served, I noticed that of all of the municipalities in Broward County, really, nobody steps up like Fort Lauderdale when it comes to providing services and trying to assist, and no one, no one spends money, no one provides services, no one allocates resources, correct me if I'm wrong, but I've just never seen it. The county does, and then even recently, we just did something that I think maybe the county should have done, but correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think any other municipality does what we do when it comes to providing services, shelter, wraparound services, social services, you name it, because it's an issue that we're dealing with, and I think most cities are in the United States. In Broward County, I think most of the other municipalities just look at this as a Fort Lauderdale issue, because the jail and where people tend to gravitate, it's an unfortunate situation, but yet we do everything we can to help folks. So I'm, I'm just pulling this, Mayor, because, you know, I'm distressed that even though we always act, really, with incredible intentions, and we always do what we feel we need to do to help people that have difficulty finding housing and that are living on our streets, we get sued. Now, obviously, this was before our tenure, but so I'm saying that I believe that we should say to Food Not Bombs, okay, here's these law fees, these legal fees, $638,196, but we're going to deduct that from the money that we would spend in a year on services. I just think that that's the way I feel about this.
Well, you're penalizing the homeless people.
Well, who's actually penalizing the homeless people? I mean, the $638,000 we're paying in legal fees because of this case from 2014 was money that we would have spent and could have spent to provide services for the homeless population, and yet, I, again, I'm just, I'm just not pleased with this settlement, I'm not pleased with the fact that...
It was 1.2 million, wasn't it?
I understand, I understand. Well, that's good then, because then we're not going to be deducting 1.2 million dollars from services, but I, I just want to make the point that I don't see why, when we are the only municipality in Broward County that steps up and does what we do to service the homeless population, then we have to go ahead and approve an item like this and pay $638,000 in legal fees for a case that dates back to 2014. I don't know how everyone else feels, but I, I just have difficulty with it, and I would be all in favor of just saying to Food Not Bombs, here's, here's, here's the legal fees, money that could have been spent some other way, and unfortunately, we're just going to, because of our budget, we're just going to have to deduct that from what we would typically spend on services, that's all. I'm not going to belabor the point, I'm just saying that I find it...
I would just like, I would like to add something, Glassman, my colleague. Yes, I, we are the major municipality that address homelessness in our county, but also to be correct, we do have some other cities who are, have stepped up and are doing, participating in the homelessness initiative to resolve it, so let's not negate the city like Pompano, Hollywood, Oakland Park, those are some of the cities that I'm remembering from my meetings with the continuum board from Broward County. So I respect what you're saying as, in regards to our efforts, and we're doing a lot, but we can't neglect or acknowledge that there are some other cities that are doing some things as well. So I just wanted to make sure we were being factual with that.
No, I understand, but there are 31, correct me if I'm wrong, are there 31 municipalities in Broward County?
There are 31 municipalities, you're right.
Okay.
There are 31.
And you've mentioned maybe three others, so...
Yeah, I've mentioned three, but they're still, they are still doing something. We don't want to leave, leave them out in the efforts, and hopefully, we'll get all the others on board. I just believe in acknowledging those who are actively taking part.
No, and I agree with you, and I do understand that they do, I'm not sure what their actual resources are committed to every year, or how that, or how that stands up to the 14 million that we just heard that we spent, but I, again, I do acknowledge that, and I agree with you on that, but, as I said, there are 31 municipalities, thank you.
All right, so, so the issue is paying the money to, as directed by the court, to pay this, and if you want to bring this up regarding our other expenditures, regarding our homeless efforts, then I think there's another opportunity to do that, but now is not the time.
I understand, I just wanted to express that.
So do you move the item?
I'll be happy to.
Do I hear a second? Do I hear a second?
Seconded.
Seconded, please call the roll.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sterman?
Yes.
Mayor Trent Talis?
Yes, and CM9 has been approved, CR2, Commissioner Sterman.
Well, this is more for informational purposes, it's written kind of, you know, ambiguous, and I'm planning on bringing it forward, but I know you're going to hate me for this, but is Ted and Sarah here, because he did want to talk about it?
Maggie Hunt is here also to talk about it.
But Ted, are you here?
No.
Well, okay, just, just as a clarification that, you know, Exhibit 3 is approving and Exhibit 4 is denying, so if we approve it, there was some question in my pre-agenda meeting, I just wanted to clarify that, so, and there was somebody else that wanted to speak on this too?
What, what did you need to clarify?
No, 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 Ted wanted to clarify that, so I was going to give him a chance to speak, that's why I pulled it, but he's not here.
He's not here.
Okay, that's fine.
Mayor, now that the commissioner has brought this up, before Maggie gets here, I did want to also thank Trish Logan, I wanted to thank staff, I found this to be a very thorough, very comprehensive plan, I like the fact that it deals with all of the issues that we've been talking about for years, it very much supports our comprehensive plan, and the fact that we are a certified local government, Fort Lauderdale has a, has a certain responsibility when it comes to historical preservation, and I just wanted to commend Trish and staff for what I thought was a very thorough and comprehensive plan, and I look forward to seeing us actually supporting this plan. For me, I will just say, and I hear this from folks in Sailboat Bend, which is our only residential historic district in the city of Fort Lauderdale, there is a genuine concern in the neighborhood, there's a genuine concern with regards to sea level rise and climate change, how these homes will be able to be preserved going into the future, I'm very happy with the fact that over the last six years, I have seen really good changes to our ordinance to help folks that own historic properties in our city, to help them maintain it, to help them not have to go through an arduous process with the Historic Preservation Board, that things can be handled administratively, but if you look at all of the goals set forth here and all of the objectives, they're excellent. I want to see us do more in terms of incentivizing people to have historic properties or that have historic properties, but I'm very concerned going forward with how do we actually preserve these homes with the threat of climate change. Sailboat Bend Historic District did suffer a lot during our very bad weather occurrences in April, and then even a couple of weeks ago, it is one of the most flooded areas in the city, so that resilience piece of this plan is really of paramount importance, because we have to help folks, we have to help them, even something that I brought up recently, many of them that want to raise their homes, need help with archaeological studies that have to happen, things that are expensive, so I'm really thrilled with this plan, and I just wanted staff to know that, excellent work, but now, the proof will be in the pudding, because it's not just having a plan that I hope is no longer just going to sit on a shelf with so many other plans that I've seen over the many years, but we really have to implement the plan, that's it, thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, anyone else, so Maggie?
I'm sorry, somebody turned it on for me.
You're good.
I totally, the neighborhood agrees with, I'm from Sailboat Bend, and I sit on the board, and so I go to a lot of events and talk to a lot of people, and I totally, it's a huge problem, resiliency, we're so thankful for this part of it, we're thankful for the very badly needed incentive, and you know what, I'm not officially speaking for them, this is just what we talk about, the very badly needed incentives that are, these are very meaningful, and more meaningful than the ones in the past, they're going to help out a lot more. The educational things are fantastic and will contribute to a new type of tourism that's undeveloped here, and that's cultural tourism. Two quick items, one of the things I hear the most is in regard to the city's ULDR review here on this document, to consider changes to disincent, to disincent, disincentivize destruction of historic resources. I can't tell you how many people come to me and are upset because historic homes in our neighborhood are being torn down, and I say, why don't you come and speak about it when it comes up at HPP or City Commission? And they say, I have before, but the city doesn't care, they're, they're going to approve, and they're not necessarily talking about you guys, you know, this is city, this is talking about many years here in the past, and I don't know about how much now, but they're going to approve every demolition request they get, they just don't listen, so it's a waste of my time. So I hope that we can work together through this particular thing and maybe some other things to change that. The one other thing I have is in regard to the item where they talk about the ULDR to provide greater clarity, and when I'm speaking about this, I'm definitely not speaking to the city staff, we have a committee that has had conversations about this, and the city staff, I think, is totally on board with this, but they can't do it without you guys, and, and that is, if this means in the future, and I'm not opposed to ULDR updates that are more restrictive necessarily to what people do with their houses in the historic district, but if this means stricter guidelines, and we don't, and the neighborhood's going to be on board with it versus protesting a lot, it's going to take the city commission showing us that you guys care about the historic district enough to make it look and act like a real historic district, because I get comments like this, this isn't a real historic district, nobody's ever tried to make it that, and so that's going to take some effort and some time and probably some money.
You going to start wearing period costumes when you walk out on the weekends?
Absolutely, I'll do it, hey, if that's what it takes, that's all, but thank you very much.
Maggie, and thank you for your work on the board in Sailboat Bend, I want you to know that, what you just said, I've had repeated conversations with the city manager about stepping it up when it comes to Sailboat Bend and doing exactly what you said, but for the folks that say to you, oh, the city doesn't care, and we just allow demolitions, just remind them what happened recently with the Biggity House.
And I think there might...
That was actually approved for demolition, and we saved it.
Well, I think they're talking more about, well, and that one was really outside, it wasn't quite 50 years old, and I do so appreciate that, I was here for that, but I think they're talking about maybe the HPP too, because they're the ones that initially vote, and you don't get to hear that many of them, but the city, and I, I don't even think they were necessarily talking about you individuals on this particular commission, they may have been talking, they may have come in 10 years ago or seven years ago, and that's just the overall thing, but everybody's very appreciative of that.
No, I, I, I hear you, I care a lot, as I think you know, as the district commissioner for Sailboat Bend, this is a very important neighborhood to me, as are all of our neighborhoods in District 2, but because this is the only, the only historically designated residential district in the entire city of Fort Lauderdale, we have to pay attention, city manager, we have to pay attention, and we have to do what's necessary to make sure that we preserve that neighborhood.
Yeah.
That is the oldest neighborhood in the city of Fort Lauderdale, the oldest.
I can't, I can't say enough about Al Battle and Chris Cooper and Tricia Logan, and how, when we have, we've had a couple of meetings with them, and how on board they are, and their great ideas and their fantastic support, and I know that those three, I don't know anybody else that they want to do, and they're trying to do everything they can.
We'll get there.
And also, uh, the Broward Trust just wanted to put in that they support this, and only a few people in our neighborhood that got together tonight on our master planning committee, um, they wanted to say that they supported too.
Thank you.
Great, thank you so much. Anyone else wish to speak on this item? There being none, would someone like to introduce the resolution? The resolution's been introduced, please call the roll.
And that's for approval.
For, for adoption?
Yes.
A resolution of the city commission of the city of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, approving the adoption of the stra- approving the adoption of the strategic historic preservation plan, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing for effective date. Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Mayor Trent Talis.
Yes, and, and that item is now approved. Moving on to the motions, M1, motion approving an event agreement and related road closures for the twenty-twenty-four King Holiday Parade and Multicultural Festival. Someone like to move the item?
So moved.
Been moved, do I hear a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, any questions? Please call the roll.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Mayor Trent Talis.
Yes, and M2's approved. M2, motion rejecting all proposals for design build services for the effluent pumps, standy generators, and administration building improvements, request for proposals, event number one oh four. Someone like to move the item?
Moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, any questions? Please call the roll.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Mayor Trent Talis.
Yes, and M2's approved. M3, motion approving the negotiated fee schedule and agreement for construction engineering and inspection services for the northeast Twenty-Fifth Avenue twenty-four inch forest main replacement and the northeast Thirty-Eighth Street forty-two inch forest main, northeast Nineteenth Avenue twenty-four inch forest main replacement projects. Um, someone like to make a motion?
Those moved.
To approve?
To approve.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded, please call the roll.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Mayor Trent Talis.
Yes, and M3's approved. M4, motion approving agreement for streetlight fixtures, annual contract with the electric supply of Tampa. Um, someone like to move the item?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second, but I also have a comment, Mayor.
Okay.
Thank you.
Please comment.
Thank you. Um, Greg, and I know we've had this conversation, but just for the record, I, we have got to do something about streetlights in our city. Um, the number of streetlights that I see that are out all the time is just off the charts. Uh, I know this is not quite related, but even what we just went through with the holiday lights on the Barrier Island where we wrapped all the poles, and those lights never worked, I just think that, you know, with today's technology, we have just got to do something, um, to make sure that wherever we have streetlight fixtures, they're always working. We need to be on some sort of maintenance schedule, we need to be sending folks out, like, very regularly to check the entire city, um, to see what lights aren't working, uh, what are working, what are FPL lights, what are city lights, uh, and we just gotta do a better job of this, because, um, right now, I, I just think that too many times, too many lights are out. Thank you.
And I'd like to kind of lead on to that too, is what is our obligation versus FPNL's obligation?
Yeah, that's a good question.
This is one of the things that I was asked during my conversations with my district last night.
So I'm gonna ask Carl to come up and talk about that. There are certain lights that are on city roads and county roads that the city maintains, and there are others on state roads that FPL maintains, and, um, to your point, um, commission, we are looking at, um, technology that allows us to have sensors in it so that we can be notified when they're out. We're gonna start a pilot in the beginning of January, we've already have some vendors in mind, but we like to understand how that technology works and how we can be notified proactively when something's not working, but Carl's gonna explain more the details on who operates and maintains which streetlights.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners, Carl Williams, Parks and Recreation Director. So, as a city, we have roughly about eighteen thousand lights, and as a city, we manage about four thousand of those lights, and FPNL, of course, has the, the remaining balance of that. And as the manager mentioned, we are looking at technology, um, the smart nodes, uh, to install so that we can be a little bit more proactive. Um, what typically tends to happen, um, when the, the time changes, when it gets darker sooner, is this does happen, um, we've noticed that, um, over the years, that this does happen, or we start to get more concerns with that, and so we're trying to address that problem now.
But that's just for an hour. I'm talking about lights that are-
Sure, yes, in general.
Yeah, it's, it's not just when the, you know, the time changes for the daylight savings time or whatever, but I'm just saying that I notice that this is a pattern, that I just wish that, you know, when I drive around at night, I, I just don't want to have to keep a record of, like, all these lights that I see out all the time, like, I'm glad to hear that we're looking at some smart technology that might help us and, and just be smarter about this, but I just think that we owe it to the city to make sure that all of our streetlights are always working.
Absolutely.
And part of what I'm getting is, I've got, you know, I'm pointing my residents to the FPNL hotline to report them, and then FPL is saying, "No, not ours, it belongs to the city," so we've got some finger pointing back and forth. If you would, please put together sort of a policy paper, something I can send out to my constituents in the neighborhood, to say, "Here's what we do, here's what we're responsible for, here's what FPNL is responsible for, if a light's out, call here, call here." So, i- if you could put something together that I could disseminate, that would be very helpful, thank you.
Will do.
And while you're at it, one quick thing, we've had, I know, I hate to just nitpick, but, uh, by, along La Solas, where like the La Solas Grand and New Ri- the River House, a whole series of lights are out there, and it's dark and it, it dangerous, so if you just want to follow up with me with that, Greg, at a later point, thank you so much.
We will.
And, um, just- And, and, and also to add to the conversation, uh, what has already been said, um, my concern as well is about those series of lights that, for a, a block, you know, the lights are not on, and to me, that appears to be something with, um, FPNL, because it's not like a light is out, it's like a whole block where the switch hasn't been, um, turned on, in my opinion, but, um, if we could, um, identify those lights so we can refer our neighbors where to call, we can get it, uh, rectified, thank you.
So, so we're gonna ask the public, if, if you could let the public know, to call eight-two-eight-eight-thousand, that's the best number to call, we can figure out whose light it is and make sure that we follow up with the reported light out, so, eh, we don't, we don't want to leave that to you, anyone to figure out, just call eight-two-eight-eight-thousand, we'll be glad to follow up. So, isn't there a numbering system that identifies which is ours and which is FPNL's?
So, we have a, a BAP of, that delineates what are F dot lights, which is what we manage, um, city lights, and then, of course, FPNL lights, and so we can use that map to kind of judge whose responsibility is it.
Yeah, but is that done on a regional basis or a light, a, a light pole by light pole basis? I mean, can there be an FPNL light pole and a, and a Fort Lauderdale light pole next to each other?
Yes, that, yes, that, yes.
Yeah, so I think there's a numbering system where, uh, that delineates, you know, who, who owns that, who owns that light, so, anyway, when you, when you get back to, Commissioner, that might be one way of trying to make it simple, you know, if it ends in an odd number, it's a Fort Lauderdale light, if it ends in an even number, you know, so I think it's as simple as that, actually. Okay, thank you, Carl. Um, so, do we have a motion on the floor for that? We do, so please call the roll.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Mayor Trent Talis.
Yes, and M4 is approved. M5, motion approving a negotiated fee schedule and agreement for construction engineering and inspection services related to the George T. Lomar Wastewater Treatment Plant redundant effluent forest main project. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Been moved and seconded?
Second.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Mayor Trent Talis.
Yes, and M5 is approved. M6, motion approving a change order, number three, for the Prospect Lake Clean Water Center, Prospect Lake Water LP, uh, do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved, second.
Been moved and seconded, please call the roll.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Mayor Trent Talis.
Yes, and M6 is approved. M7, motion approving the lease agreement between Oakland Park Bays LLC and the city of Fort Lauderdale and substantially the form provided. Um, do I hear a motion to approve?
Moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded, please call the roll.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Mayor Trent Talis.
Yes, and M7 is approved. Um, uh, M8, motion approving a consent to assignment of capital funds payments pursuant to inter-local agreement, allowing the DDA to utilize the Heizenga Park inter-local grant agreement with the city as collateral for a loan. Do I hear a motion?
Moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, anyone have any questions?
Uh, yeah, I'd like to, um, a lot of que- I'd like to have this explained to us.
So I ask if you have any questions?
Absolutely, Mr. City Manager, could you explain, and I have several questions regarding this, why, what we need this for, what this is about and everything?
Yeah, I think, is Susan Grant the one that's- Sure, and Laura, I'd like to ask Susan and Laura to come up and explain more in detail what are the, um, things that we're, um, asking for the commission to approve.
Oh my goodness, the whole team is coming up here.
Got a lot of questions, they got a lot of answers. Okay, go ahead, Commissioner.
And somebody left their phone up here, I'm not sure who's.
Go ahead, Commissioner. Commissioner, go ahead and ask your question.
No, 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 Laura, could you explain, explain what this is about, why they need this, what this is for, and, and give us a little, uh, update, what this is.
Sure, um, good evening, Mayor and Commissioners, Laura Reese, Director of Office of Management and Budget, our role is to administer the agreements, so, um, this may get into a little bit more of the legal information, but I'll explain it as I understand it. So the city entered into agreement with the DDA to contribute, um, up to five million dollars, or no more than one-third of the cost of the Heizenga Park project, so, um, it's, our contributions to the DDA is being made in annual payments to the tune of around seven-hundred-and-eighteen-thousand dollars a year. Um, the DDA would like to use the city's annual payment to leverage debt, and based on our agreement with the DDA, they need the city's consent to assign the loan, so in this item, the city would consent to pay the bank directly instead of the DDA as part of the capital project.
Why, why is this needed? I'm just curious, why, why are we doing this, why do they need this, why are the supposed-
Because I believe that bank's requiring it to make sure that the debt is secured, because we're a good source of funds to repay the loan.
Okay, um-
But I can have the DDA speak to that.
Explain, explain this to us, if you, oh, hey, come on up, John. It was a pleasure.
So I'll, I'll take the first stab at it, John Miller, General Counsel, Downtown, Downtown Building Authority. So, we're in a building that was funded with the same structure, when, as your appointment at the former art center, when we, um, took private and public pledges, there was a loan, and it was gathered up, and there was a loan, and it built this room we're in today, and it built the, the facility. We did the same thing for the parker on City On Land, and DDA replicated the same structure, um, public and private pledges, gathered them up, and we have a loan for the construction. In this case, the lender said, "We just want to make sure that the city consents to, you know, what you're doing here," so that's all this is. Um, the only case that you would have to pay the bank is if we default, so we've never defaulted in our, since nineteen sixty-five, so I think your risk is pretty minimal, so that's the big picture. If you want to get into the weeds, Gary Johnson's the finance, uh, lawyer for the DDA, we can get into the aspect of it, but, um, there's no real liability to the city.
Well, I, yeah, I am gonna, come on up for a second, I do want to speak to Tom about this too, if you know. Um, what is our, I mean, if, if the loan does default, uh, how, how is the city liable? Or is, I mean, could we lose the park, or, I mean, what, I'm just, I mean, I just don't understand the-
Yes, sir, uh, Gary Johnson, Bond Counsel for the DDA.
Thank you.
The park is not security for the loan, the loan is secured just by these pledged revenues, there's donations, there's the leases, and then there's government support contracts, and what it's doing basically is leveraging it so that we can borrow the money now and build out the improvements now, and then the loan will get paid off as these dollars come in from the city, as those donations come in, it's basically, um, matching the timing of those payments and everything so that we can do the construction now, and this is the structure that would be preferred by lenders, that if they have collateral, especially one that is as significant as this, that they would like to have the consent of the other party and that it's involved.
But, but our exposure for default is, is the-
Your exposure is only to pay exactly what you do under the, the agreement, it doesn't change the agreement at all, uh, basically, it's just an acknowledgement that we're assigning it to the lender, and that if there is a default, the lender could give you notice to say, "Please make those payments directly to us, they were gonna come to us directly anyway, but we'd like to pay, you have, uh, we have a default, so we'd like you to pay it directly."
But no additional exposure liability?
No additional exposure at all.
And, uh, I just have one other question, and John, I do want to apologize, usually I like to talk about ahead of time, but there's a little bridge tunnel thing that sort of took up most of our time, so I apologize, but, uh, is any of the funds gonna be, is the funds gonna be used for the park itself? Is that what they're gonna be used for?
Yes, for the capital improvements for the park, correct.
And is any going to, the big question is, that came up in my agenda, is any going towards the restaurant?
No, the restaurant is really providing revenues, they're gonna, they're gonna pay a lease payment and partially funding these improvements, because that's part of the private pledges that we're gathering up for this loan, so no, the money's not used for the restaurant, the restaurant's actually paying.
I'm, okay.
It's the reverse.
Well, thank you for clearing that up.
Okay, thanks.
Speaking of restaurant, is that the final design of that restaurant?
Well, I know this is not a DRC meeting, but our, uh, restaurant plans, the, the restaurateurs' plans just went through a DRC process, so it's going through the city review, um, those are definitely the concepts that have been presented to date, and really to fit in with the, the park design.
Okay, just, um, just asking. Any other questions, Commissioner?
No, I'm fine, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, John.
Uh, so, M8, uh, has been moved and seconded, so please call the roll.
Commissioner Herbst?[1637.15] Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis?
So M8 is now approved, we're going to move M9 to after, I believe we said, what did we say? Which one is, uh, after R8. After R8, yep. Sorry, guys, just-- R1, Appointment of Board and Committee Members. Mr. Clerk, would you like to read the names into the record?
Yes, for the January 9th, 2024 Resolution, Code Enforced on Board, Terry Nolan, nominated by Commissioner Glassman, Risk Management Committee, Commissioner John C. Herbst, and that's the commission representative on that board. And for tonight's resolution-- Citizens Police Review Board, Paul Eichner, nominated by Mayor Trentalis, Community Service Board, Wisme Cius, nominated by Commissioner Glassman, Sustainability Advisory Board, Sophia Thornton, nominated by Mayor Trentalis, 2024 Walk of Fame Induction Committee, George Hamberry, nominated by Mayor Trentalis, Eugenia Ellis, nominated by Commissioner Herbst, Robert Lockery, nominated by Commissioner Herbst, Patrick Shavlosky, nominated by Commissioner Glassman, Lillian Small, nominated by Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman. And we have two additional names if we can add, uh, to the resolution. For the Audit Advisory Board, Stephen Emery, nominated by Commissioner Herbst, and for Public Art and Placement Advisory Board, Lynn Marks, nominated by Commissioner Sturman, and that rounds it out.
Okay, thank you. Are there any of the names to be nominated from the commission? There being none, would someone like to introduce the resolution as amended?
Introduced.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
A resolution to City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, appointing or nominating, if applicable, board and committee members as set forth in the exhibited tests here to make a part hereof. Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis?
Yes, and I want to thank all those folks that have agreed to participate in these boards and committees, thank you for your commitment to our city. R2, the City Auditor Annual Performance Review. Mr. City Manager, how are we going to proceed on that? Oh. So, the floor is yours.
Okay. This is, uh, my first annual, um, review, and, um, I provided a, um, schedule or memorandum explaining what, uh, things we accomplished during the year with, um, uh, our staff, and, um, I had a one-on-one with, um, each of the commissioners and the mayor, and, um, we, um, we also finalized a, a final, um, evaluation and performance, um, document that will probably be more in place for next year, but, uh, it was available to be used this year, and, um, again, I just want to say I appreciate the opportunity to, to work for the city of Fort Lauderdale, and, um, I'm lucky to have a, a dedicated staff and a, um, good group of, uh, employees that work, and, um, I'll open it up for any questions at this point.
Okay. Um, anyone have any questions of the city auditor? Commissioner Herbst?
Uh, no, I used, I used the form that, um, that we've all kind of coalesced around, I thought it was a good one, I'll probably be making some tweaks to that going into next year, but, uh, I had my conversation with Mr. Riley, told him some of the things that I'd like to see, um, on his radar for next year, and evaluated his performance for the current year. And I will just let you know that my general breakdown is either satisfactory, below satisfactory, or above satisfactory, and I consider Mr. Riley's performance to be above satisfactory. So thank you, Pat, for everything you and the team do, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, Commissioner Glassman? Oh, excuse me, Vice Mayor. Vice Mayor, do you have any comments?
Um, yes, I, um, first, thank you, um, Pat, for your service over this year. Um, I, this year has been a process, of course, being a freshman to the commission. Um, the things that I reached out to you, the items, the discussions we had, you were very informative, and I really appreciate, um, what you shared and our conversation that we had one-on-one. I had already had confidence in the job that you are doing, and I do believe that you will continue to do so. So I want to thank you for the service that I've, um, been able to see you render to the city over this past year. Um, in regards to, um, the evaluation, um, I do, um, also like to say that I am, um, in far as a rating, I do say that, um, you are, uh, above average, you are doing a satisfactory job, and I would like that to be added to the record. Thank you for your service, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Vice Mayor. Uh, Commissioner Glassman?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, I'm concurring, Pat, with, uh, my colleague's previous comments. Um, ever since you came on board, um, I have found you to be very accessible, um, always answering my questions, uh, always available, always looking to issues that I ask of you. Um, I, I have basically, uh, been very, very pleased, um, with the last year, uh, so again, I concur what's been said. Um, I guess we're going to decide on what we're doing in terms of a percentage increase.
Do you have a recommendation?
Um, well, what have we been typically doing, uh--
I think it's 3%.
I was gonna say, has it been three or three and a half, or it's something in that range, right? City Manager, what are we--
It's 3%.
Three? Is that what we were typically doing?
That would be, or whatever you all decide.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm definitely fine with that, because I agree--
John, is it 3%?
I agree with Commissioners Herbst and Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman that, uh, I would also, uh, rate, um, above average. So thank you very much for your service, I look forward to a really good, um, coming year, uh, and, uh, please just continue the fine work that you've been doing, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Sturman?
Uh, we've spoken, I, uh, I want to thank you for the chance to have the input and feedback, and, um, I don't have an actual score per se, but I use that as a template, and I think throughout the categories, everything's between above average and excellent, so, uh, I want to thank you, a very good job, thank you.
Thank you.
So I just want to echo all the sentiments tonight, thank you for the great job that you're performing, and, uh, the wonderful thing I like is that, uh, you also come to a lot of our events, so people get to know who you are. I think that's important, because you shouldn't be a shadowy figure, you know, um, because, you know, a lot of city staff people, you know, don't ever have that opportunity to come, and, um, uh, and I think your position in our city is important, and, uh, you know, if you just look at the, some of the projects that you participated on and helped us through, um, you know, we need your talent and your, and your direction and your fortitude, and, uh, and I think, uh, that speaks well of your office, so I also would rate, um, rate you above average, and, uh, and I would concur with the 3% merit increase.
It's true, Pat, at every event I go to, people always say to me, "Who is that?" I have to tell them.
He's, he's the Secret Service.
Secret Service, thank you.
Okay, so, uh, resolution's been introduced to, um, to, uh, make the increase 3%. Um, if there are no other questions, please call the roll.
A resolution to City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, providing for a 3% merit salary increase for City Auditor Patrick Riley, effective October 18, 2023. Commissioner Herbst? Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis?
Yes, and R2 is approved, and thank you again, Pat, and, uh, we'll see you next year.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Uh, as we continue, R3, this is a resolution providing notice of decision to proceed with an acceptance of the unsolicited proposal submitted by Water Taxi of Fort Lauderdale to construct, operate, and maintain a water taxi terminal and lease, uh, a city-owned property located at 1,001 Seabreeze Boulevard in our city. Anyone have any questions, or someone like to introduce the resolution? It's been introduced. Any questions? This is District 2-ish, 3-ish, 4-ish?
It's in District 2, thank you.
It's in District 2, okay. It's on the cusp.
Well, it's in District 2.
Okay.
Thank you.
I would love to have the applicant come up.
Who is the applicant? Mr. Walker, is he here? You know, I want to thank Mr. Walker for all of his work year-round in making the Winterfest organization the success that it is. It wasn't just the Boe Parade that they do, they have events all year long. It's a great, great, um, opportunity for people of our community to lay out the welcome, um, mat, to visitors to our community, and, uh, as Chair of the event this year, you did an absolutely amazing job, Bill, so thank you so much for all the work that you do. You want to step up to the podium? Thank you.
Okay, um, and, um, you want, Matt, if you want to come up also, some of the things we've already discussed. First of all, thank you, I think it's a, a nice project, I think it's going to be, add a lot to, as a welcome portal to the city. A couple of the issues that we've spoken about, and again, we have, but this is more for the general public, my concern was for parking, and, you know, we tried to work something out, and I guess the biggest issue was across the street, but as Matt, as you've mentioned to me, there will be a, a cutout for Uber and Lyft and Rideshare as part of this, correct?
Uh, yes, Matt Sacca, representing Water Taxi. Commissioner, that's correct. Uh, our architect, Adachi Architects, has built that into the plan, so that's in there.
Right, so how many spaces?
I'm sorry, Mayor, the question was if there was an Uber--
Yeah, but how many spa, uh, one car, two cars?
Actually, I don't know the exact answer, but it's definitely more than one car.
Okay.
Sorry, Commissioner, I'm sorry.
No, that's quite all right, Mr. Mayor. And, uh, Matt, one more thing, that, we had discussed this a few times, and Bill, we had discussed this earlier, uh, you know, it's a public-private partnership, we're looking for a public purpose, and the one thing that I would like to see, that we had discussed, the issue earlier, um, I would, you know, we have the eight water trolley stations, and to truly make this a public, uh, uh, purpose spot, if, uh, we spoke about adding a ninth water trolley stop over at that, that center.
Yeah, thanks, Commissioner, we're, I talked to Bill, we're happy to look at that and happy to work with staff, that's a, um, that's actually a city-funded operation, so we're happy to work with them and see if we can make that work, but, yeah, absolutely.
If they're available to make that, uh, as a spot, I think that'd be fantastic for events and special events and everything. Bill, thank you for everything you do, it's a great asset to our city and our whole community. Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much. And, and Bill, correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think most people will drive to this location, correct, and park their car?
No, it'll be a pretty, uh, come-by boat, or pickup-drop-off.
Exactly, I just wanted to make that point.
No, we anticipate a lot of that.
Because that's, I'm, I'm not that concerned with the parking, because actually, part of the reason I think this is an excellent project is it will relieve, uh, the A1A from traffic, uh, because it will be a hub for people to come by water, um, to and from.
Absolutely.
For events and for everything else, just to visit.
And along the whole barrier island, just--
Exactly.
In with the development.
And there's parking across the street, right?
Yes, there is.
How many spots?
Oh yeah, there's plenty of--
Hundreds?
Yes, tons.
Hundreds, so I'm not concerned about parking at all.
Hundreds?
Hundreds, hundreds, hundreds.
And like to, like my colleague to the left has said, you know, that people are going to be coming in the Uber to pick you up and go up and down, so, you know, Uber's more important than parking there. I'm agreeing with you, Steve.
Well, I'm gonna write that down. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen. Thank you. Any further questions or comments? Has the resolution been introduced? It has, so please call the roll.
A resolution to City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, providing notice of its decision to proceed with an acceptance of the unsolicited proposal submitted by Water Taxi of Fort Lauderdale LLC to develop, construct, operate, and maintain a water taxi terminal on and lease city-owned property located at 1,001 Seabreeze Boulevard, Fort Lauderdale, Florida, authorizing negotiations for proposed interim agreement, comprehensive agreement, or both, in accordance with Section 255.065 Florida statutes, authorizing the preparation of the lease terms to be incorporated in a comprehensive agreement providing for an effective date. Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis?
Yes, and R3 is approved. R4, it's a resolution, rescinding resolution, uh, number 23-261, and declaring notice of intent to sublease city-owned property located at 501 Seabreeze Boulevard pursuant to Section 813 of the City Charter to Ishoff Peninsula LLC. Does someone like to introduce the resolution?
Introduced.
Questions?
Uh, yes, if I can. Who's, who's the representative of that project? Or I could ask, or I could even ask Cities, uh, who is, um, this is the Swimming Hall of Fame, uh, that was brought back because they had, um, the LLC needed to be formed, correct, as well as the 50-year, that went back to the 30-year, correct, Mr. Mayor?
That I don't know the answer. That's Susan, uh, Susan?
Yes, Susan Grant, Assistant City Manager, yeah, this was on the agenda last time, and there were questions as far as the length and whether the entity, um, Ishoff Peninsula, was on SunBiz, the agreement that, or the rescission and the new notice of intent that we're bringing you tonight is for a 30-year period, and we have the SunBiz statements attached. Um, the Mario and the team could explain, um, the, um, why the change in entity, um, they, they've had their tax council provide, um, that information to them if you're interested in, in knowing the why behind that.
I do have just a couple, a couple quick questions. Now, it's an LLC, there's a registered agent, but who owns the actual LLC per se?
The International, well, go ahead.
The International Swimming Hall of Fame.
Oh, yeah, come on, please, you're right.
I'm Mario Caprini from CGHP Development, I'm here also with Matt, who's on the Executive Committee of Ishoff, and Corey, my co-developer.
Okay, and, uh, are they considered a civic, civic or charitable organization, Ishoff?
Ishoff is a 501(c)(3) a nonprofit.
Okay, and that, that, Mr. Senior Attorney, that fits the definition?
They are not a 501(c)(3).
They what?
Their lawyer could explain what they are, they changed, uh, for tax reasons, to this new entity.
Okay, is, is the new entity a civic or charitable organization?
It is not.
It's not?
No.
You want to step up to the microphone and explain?
So, we provided a letter from the attorney of Ishoff, who's a tax expert, that explains, you know, answers each of, of your questions.
But it is, my, my concern is that to--
Your head. Let, won't you answer the question?
So, so, as we were going through the comprehensive negotiations, and we, we finalized the structure of the business deal, Ishoff's attorney realized that they really shouldn't be in control of the real estate transactions as a 501(c)(3). So, the, the original, you know, charitable nonprofit 501(c)(3) for the museum still exists, but this is a new now LLC, it was mistakenly set up as an INC initially, that's what we're rescinding, so it should have been set up as an LLC to handle the real estate transactions, um, and then that's what the letter explains here.
But is it, does it have IRS status then?
Uh, ye, yes, it will.
What is the IRS status?
And it's in the letter, I want to make sure--
Is it a C3 or C4, C6?
It's a 501A.
501A.
It's a single-member LLC, it passes through, it's disregarded for tax purposes.
Okay, so it doesn't have charitable designation?
It does not, it's a 501, it, it, it's a tax-exempt 501A, and that includes any 501(c)(3) organization, it's disregarded for income tax purposes, it's simply a bookkeeping, because--
Well, it, yes and no, I, I think people should understand the difference.
Right.
A donation to that entity is not tax-deductible. That's the difference, correct?
Correct, right.
They can still operate in nonprofit status.
Correct.
But the, any donations or contributions are not tax-deductible.
And that entity will not be asking for donations.
Correct. I, I think that, I think the, the Commissioner was trying to get to that point.
But I think what's also important, Mayor, is, correct me if I'm wrong, but this particular, uh, entity is dealing with all of the vertical improvements aside from the museum.
That's correct.
And that, that's important, Mayor, that distinction is very important, because this is also being created for that. Later on, we have an agenda items that dealing with the museum and its related functions, which is a different entity.
Correct.
And I think that distinction is really important.
And the purpose was not to commingle and not to put in jeopardy--
Yes.
The nonprofit status of, of the Ishoff Museum.
Exactly, and that, that's--
So all of the real estate subleasing to the restaurant, to the event center, to, uh, the office space is going to go through that entity, which is only owned by the nonprofit.
As opposed to the museum and the VIP suites, et cetera, et cetera, all related to the museum, which is what we're dealing with later, thank you.
Okay, any further questions?
But are, are we obligated to lease to civic or charitable only, or are we allowed to, to do this?
It is fully owned by the nonprofit, so this is just a legal arm--
Okay. You want to say something?
There are two different sections of the charter, and Tom can help me, but one dealt with leases to nonprofits or charitable, and the other to other types of entities. So we're not restricted just to charitable organizations as far as what we can lease to.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, there being none, the resolution was introduced, so please call the roll.
A resolution to City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, rescinding resolution number 23-261, providing notice of intent to sublease property located at 501 Seabreeze Boulevard, Fort Lauderdale, Florida, 3, 33316, to Ishoff Peninsula LLC pursuant to Section 8.13 of the City Charter, providing notice of a public hearing before the City Commission at 6:00 PM on January 23rd, 2024, for consideration of the terms and conditions and to authorize execution of the instruments by the proper city officials and providing an effective date. Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
No.
Mayor Trent Talis?
Yes. R5, this is a resolution approving an affordable housing development agreement and assumption of liability and hold harmless agreement between the City of Fort Lauderdale and Habitat for Humanity of Broward Inc., and delegating authority to the City Manager to execute amendments to the Affordable Housing Development Agreement that reflect administrative approval of modifications or amendments to the site plan. We have a number of people sign up to speak. Does staff have any presentation on this? No? Okay. There are about half a dozen people, so I'll call you in threes. Romney? Former Commissioner Romney Rogers, good evening, Romney.
Good evening, everyone.
You could push the button, though. On the bottom of the microphone, on the bottom of the microphone. I know, ever since you left, we got a little high-tech.
I got it, thank you.
You could sit here, your old seat, if it's more comfortable for...
So, I want to start with the obvious, of thanking this commission for being so forward-thinking in their positions here, and I noticed that for 2024, your top commission priority is advancing housing accessibility, and I think that's been the top for the past few years for the obvious reasons. When the average home and median-priced home of Broward County is $600,000.
When did that happen?
It's crazy, isn't it? So, obviously, this is a great project, and I think you've seen the dynamics of the demand. You read about it every day, but just to give you a little nutshell, there's 34,185 people who went on our website to determine whether or not they could qualify for Habitat, okay? And it all boiled down to 52 applicants, all right? Because it's a tough process to get through all that, you know, and it's not an easy row to hoe. You have to donate 300 hours, you have to take an annual course on how you operate your home, you have to buy the property, you have to pay a mortgage, and you pay taxes. So, it's an amazing organization that I've been involved with on the board for a couple of years, and I know this commission is doing its best to try to address the housing accessibility, and I would strongly support this project. Any questions, I'm happy to try to answer them.
Thank you so much for what you do for our community, Romney, I appreciate it. Thank you, Romney.
Thank you.
Richard Gertz, followed by Nancy Robin, followed by Mike, I know, he says for questions only, so just those two people, Richard and Nancy. The others are just here for questions. Oh, Donald Lennard also.
Good evening. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commission, Nancy Robin, CEO of Habitat for Humanity. Really, we just have show of force, there's nobody that needs to speak.
Want to all stand up for here, Habitat for Humanity? Come on, stand up. Wow.
These are homeowners and our future homeowners, and I thank you from the bottom of my heart. All of you have been champions for affordable housing. We see a lot of rental housing going up, not a lot of homeownership. It's a very difficult goal to attain. I'd like to take, thank also the city management and the city employees. We've worked hard to get to this point, but we're making dreams come true. And to the families that are here tonight, I thank you for investing in civic engagement to show how important homeownership is. Thank you all.
You're very welcome, thank you. Richard Gertz, are you here? He says, okay, anyone else wish to speak on this item? Okay, there's nobody else who wishes to speak. Would someone like to introduce the resolution?
Introduced.
Does anyone have any questions?
No, but just again, to say thank you for all of the work that you do. Thank you.
Okay, please call the roll.
And Commissioner, that's for approval, correct?
Yes.
Thank you. A resolution of City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, approving an affordable housing development agreement and an assumption of liability and hold harmless agreement with Habitat for Humanity of Broward Inc., delegating authority to the City Manager the City Manager is designated to execute both agreements together with any amendments to the Affordable Housing Development Agreement that reflect the modifications or amendments to the site plan that are administratively approved in a supplemental documents in connection with the Affordable Housing Development Agreement, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sternman?
Yes.
Mayor Trent Talis?
Yes, and R5 is approved. R6, a resolution approving and ratifying collective bargaining agreement between the City of Fort Lauderdale and the Fraternal Order of Police. Someone like to introduce the resolution?
Introduced.
Please call the roll. I can excuse myself.
A resolution of City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, approving and ratifying a collective bargaining agreement between the City of Fort Lauderdale and Fort Lauderdale Police Lodge 31, Fraternal Order of Police, Police Lieutenants and Captains for the period October 1, 2023 through September 30, 2026. Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sternman?
Yes.
Mayor Trent Talis?
He's left the room.
Okay.
Vice Mayor, can you read the next agenda item? The mayor has stepped out of the room, so we can keep moving.
Well, has the vote been finalized? What?
Yeah.
The clerk, is that finalized?
40. 40.
40.
Yes.
Okay, all right. Going on to the next item, which is R7, a resolution approving ratification of collective bargaining agreement between the City of Fort Lauderdale, Fraternal Order of Police, Lodge 31.
Introduced.
It's been introduced, call the roll.
A resolution of City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, approving and ratifying a collective bargaining agreement between the City of Fort Lauderdale and Fort Lauderdale Police Lodge 31, Fraternal Order of Police, Police Lieutenants and Captains for the period October 1, 2022 through September 30, 2023. Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sternman?
Yes.
And Mayor Trent Talis, he's not present.
Okay. Okay. If all is being carried, we are moving on to item number R8, resolution rescinding and replacing resolution number 2220 regarding the City of Fort Lauderdale City Commission recommendation locally preferred alternative for the commuter rail train crossing of the New River in the City of Fort Lauderdale.
May I make a recommendation that we pause until the mayor returns for this discussion? I'm sure he'd like to be part of it.
Recommendation, I self, any colleagues on the dais?
Vice Mayor, he's walking right in now.
That's it, he heard me and came back.
And I'd like to... I'd like to introduce the resolution, and I think it's Exhibit 4. It's, yeah, Exhibit 4, I'd like to introduce this as Exhibit 4.
So, which, what does Exhibit 4 say?
If, City Clerk, if you could just, just to make sure we're doing the right one, Exhibit 4, introduced.
Do you want me to call?
No, just to, you read it, just so we know which one it is.
So, let me ask you this. Commissioner, so, the City of Fort Lauderdale Commission continues to affirm a tunnel as a locally preferred alternative for commuter rail crossing of the New River. I agree with you there. However, recognizing that Broward County will be the lead agency for obtaining funding and operation of this portion of the rail project, if after collaboration with Broward County, it is determined that a tunnel is not a feasible option, then we will support Broward County in advancing a mid-level bascule drawbridge as an alternative. Now, the slippery slope that that creates is that Broward County has already gone on record that they are intending to move forward with a bridge. So, I'm not sure whether adding that sentence is really going to, it's going to weaken our foundation in trying to assert our position, because they've already made their decision. And we can perhaps try to persuade them otherwise, but I'm concerned that giving in at this, with a resolution like this, is an opportunity for them to just pull the rug out from under us and say, oh, well, they agreed to a bridge now, and, you know, there's no tunnel option that's feasible as far as we're concerned, they're concerned, therefore they're going to move forward with the bridge, and Fort Lauderdale's already agreed to that. That's difficult for me to accept. And so, listening to all the people who spoke today, no one came out in favor of a bridge. Commissioner Herbst even came out against the whole idea of having commuter rail. So, I think that a middle position, perhaps, just focusing on the tunnel, might be the best position for the city, and so I would support something like that instead of adding the bridge alternative to be decided by the county commission.
Mayor, one of the things that I thought was very helpful from today's discussion, looking at the BDO analysis, and again, you know, no disrespect, guys, I still need to be convinced that the numbers are right, and I'm not there yet, but assuming that they are.
Well, they're not been vetted, don't we?
Exactly, and assuming that they are, and given the opportunity to go ahead and do that, you know, what I heard from, you know, multiple individuals today whose opinions I respect, is that we have an obligation to take what we have over to the county, show it to them. I personally think, you know, the folks at the county are people of good faith, they're intelligent, they'll look at that, and if the numbers do make sense, I think that they'll be open to considering, you know, which option is the one that they want to support. I don't think anybody at the county is necessarily opposed to a tunnel, just like I don't think anybody that I've talked to at all in the city is necessarily opposed to a tunnel. I think for, for the county, and for many of the folks I've talked to, myself included, it really is a matter of cost and affordability and the ability to actually get the product done, because we know at a certain point, when the cost exceeds our ability to pay, it simply kills the project. And so, you know, I say this all the time, and I'll say it again tonight, done is better than perfect, I believe, actually, and I was being facetious when I said I don't want to kill commuter rail. I actually think commuter rail is integral to the success of our continued economic viability and development of South Florida, and I don't just mean Fort Lauderdale, I mean South Florida.
But should it come at the expense of Fort Lauderdale? That's my big concern.
Well, but it also benefits Fort Lauderdale, Mayor, because one of the biggest problems that I hear about over and over and over again is the inability for us to find a workforce down here, because nobody can afford to live in Fort Lauderdale. When I drive on Broward Boulevard every afternoon, what I see is bumper-to-bumper traffic going to 95. Those people are either going north or south. They work in downtown Fort Lauderdale, but they don't live here. What I see on commercial in Oakland Park Boulevard every day are people driving to and from I-95 during rush hour. They don't live in Fort Lauderdale. They live north, they live south, they commute to Fort Lauderdale to work. This is our workforce. The folks that, hold on, hold on. The folks that work in our hotels and our restaurants don't live in Fort Lauderdale. I talk to our restaurant owners all the time, and they are closing shifts down. They're not doing lunch because they can't get workers for lunch. Folks in our hotels are not cleaning rooms because they don't have people that can clean rooms. And so, I believe that having the option of commuter rail is critical, and I think that, that this part is just the beginning. You know, they're going to be running rapid bus transit from the beach out to Sawgrass that's going to connect with this. All of this will be part in the next 30 to 40 years of a grid that is going to be, you know, consequential to our continued success. As we continue to grow, our environment down here will continue to attract more and more resonance, and we are dealing right now with substantial amounts of congestion in Miami. You're seeing it start to develop up here. Our roadways are getting to the point where I won't drive on sunrise after 3:00 in the afternoon, okay? Many parts of our town are just becoming overwhelmed with traffic. This is part of a long-term solution. I agree with you that people are not going to automatically leap out of their cars and get on trains, but I do think this is an option, and I'll give you an example. I have friends that live up in Boca, I've got friends in Delray, I do business in West Palm. If I have to go up to West Palm, I take Brightline. If I've got to stop at Publix, the dry cleaners, and the gym on the way, I drive. So, it's an option. It's not something I do every day, but it is a way that we can reduce some of the congestion that we see. And one of the things we talk about all the time as a community is our goal of being carbon neutral, right? We preach vision zero. We pay so much lip service to reducing our impact on the environment and sustainability and climate change and everything else, but the most impactful thing we can do to get there is mass transit, it's public transportation. So, we can't adopt, you know, this progressive view and then stand in the way of the progress that actually gets us there.
Well, that's interesting narrative, and I'm not disagreeing with your, with your narrative regarding the need for mass transit in the South Florida region. I think we've already had that debate, and I think, you know, we're agreeable to that. But my argument is, and will continue to be, that while other communities see this as an opportunity to flourish with economic development and affordable housing opportunities, it should not come at the expense of Fort Lauderdale. We are already flourishing, we already are doing all the things that all the other communities wish they could do, and to build a bridge smack in the middle of our city, which would crush existing development as well as future development, is not the solution. And yes, we can have both, we can have both. Today, we would, it was just demonstrated to us that we can have commuter rail service and we can have it so it doesn't negatively impact the City of Fort Lauderdale. You have to agree with that.
No, I do, and I think we need to take that study and take that to Broward County, and we have to get all these people that stood here and made those points in a passionate way, have to go and talk to the county, take that study, we will stand side by side with them and present it to them and say, look, here is our study that demonstrates it can be affordable.
Right, but, but Commissioner, we can just, this resolution can end after the first sentence. If it's determined that it's not financially feasible, then we can say, well, fine, we'll make a decision whether or not we want to go with the bridge. But to automatically show our hand, which is what this does, is, you know, you're better, I know, I've known you for years, and you always said, don't ever show your hand, and this is what you're doing here, you're showing your hand.
Well, I am, and I will, and I will say why, because we know that we've got a timeframe to get this done. It's February through, as you said, April, but I would say earlier rather than later is ideal. My bottom line is, I have always supported the tunnel. I've been saying this for the last year since I started campaigning, that I support a tunnel as long as it is within at least 50% of the cost of the bridge. If we can get this done for $700 million, I support the tunnel. If it's 1.5 billion, and by the way, I do struggle with some of the numbers, I think you're a little too conservative on your contingency numbers, okay? One of the ways you got the number down is you cut all the contingencies. That's a really good way to cut a number down. I prefer FDOT's much more conservative approach of a higher contingency number, because I know we're going to blow the budget anyway, so I, so I tend to think we're going to be more in the $1.25 billion range at a minimum, but that's just me, I'm a conservative individual.
For a bridge or for a bridge?
For the tunnel, for the tunnel.
So, which is, which is significantly less than all the other projections?
Absolutely, and again, I think we make that argument to the county. I think the, I have, and maybe I'm naive in this, but, you know, I think if we can present an argument to the county that says this is affordable, and we demonstrate that these numbers are real, they're solid, they're affordable, I don't think the county is going to push back on it simply because of, you know, a stance that they've taken. I think you talk to these folks, they're business people, they're reasonable, they're rational, I think it's a business decision, and I think if the numbers make sense to us, they'll make sense to them.
Okay, so let me give you an example of why I think you're...
Well, let me...
Wait, we're having, let me just finish our conversation here. So, we presented them with a lot of numbers, and we've done a lot, we had a lot of, I had a lot of meetings with the county, with Monica Sopero, with the mayor, the former mayor, and we've had these conversations. We had joint meetings with MPO and all that, and what, and after all of that, we see an op-ed piece in the Sun Sentinel by the county administrator telling the world that the tunnel option is going to cost $6 billion. Now, nowhere in any study did it ever say that it was going to cost $6 billion to build a tunnel. She combined a lot of different numbers together to justify that number, and to me, that shows bad faith. So, now, it shouldn't be objectionable to you to say, look, if we're all in favor of doing a tunnel, then let's just end it at that, end it that we affirm a tunnel as a locally preferred alternative for commuter rail crossing, and then let's just see how they react. If they, if they find that, you know, that they can't buy into it, then we as a commission can make a decision whether or not we want to change our mind with regard to any other alternative. We're not compromising ourselves by automatically showing our hand in the very first time we put our, we get delta, we deal our first card. So, I'm just saying, it's smarter to just say we're going to be in favor of a tunnel rather than, you know, giving them all their options and ultimately they're choosing one that's not the tunnel. That's all I'm saying.
So, the one thing I do recall, because I remember when the prior commission took their vote, because I was here, was that the vote was for a tunnel but didn't preclude the bridge. I mean, I remember my predecessor, Heather, speaking at length about that. I remember Mr. McKenzie speaking at length about that, so I believe that the commission...
That was their position.
No, but that was, that was the position behind the resolution that we adopted at that time, was that it was not solely the tunnel, it was the tunnel if feasible, if not the bridge. I mean, I remember these conversations very distinctly. I know that the commission, because when we first brought it up for, when you all first brought it up for a vote, it didn't move forward because of that particular constraint that was placed on it. The other two commissioners were very vocal about it, and the general consensus was...
I mean, we'd have to research that, we'd have to research that, I'm sorry, I don't remember that.
Well, we have, we have that resolution, the original resolution, that the commission passed on January 2022, it's Exhibit 1 in our backup.
Okay.
And there is no, there is no mention of supporting the bridge at all.
I remember the discussion distinctly, Commissioner.
You're right, the discussion existed, it did occur, but there's no language in the final resolution supporting a bridge.
Right, in fact, I don't even know why that resolution just can't even just still stand.
See, section 1 of that resolution, the City Commission of Fort Lauderdale urges the Florida Department of Transportation to recommend construction of a tunnel. There's no, and if you can't do a tunnel, do a bridge, it doesn't say that.
There's none of that in this resolution. There's none of that in this resolution.
So Commissioner Sturman?
Okay, I have a few things. Thank you very much for the opportunity to talk. And I, this is no, no specific order, but some things that came out of this discussion and some things that are blatantly obvious that we we all know. Number one, we need to work with the county, and we can't do this on our own. We can't decide that we're going to do a tunnel and and not have the county on board. I mean, they can go ahead without us. We cannot go ahead without them.
They can't go ahead and build a bridge to our city.
Well, they could apply, we can't, we can't apply for federal grants. We're not going to own the system. We're not going to be operating the system. We're not going to be applying for loans, and we're, we're not going to be the lead organization for, we do need to work with the county on this. That's number one. Number two, this is a middle ground. It doesn't close the door on anything, but it does reaffirm, clearly reaffirms that the tunnel is our number one choice, and it does keep the options open. Number three, speaking to the county mayor, the county commissioners, I mean, every one of them in the last week, once again, confirmed that time is sensitive. They need to at least start applying for grants and applying for ways to get this project done. Doesn't close the door, they could start moving that direction, and as we do a study or as we get more information, we could always pivot back and say, listen, this this is going to take a couple of years to go through. In that time, if it makes sense, we could still have the tunnel open. It doesn't close the door on anything. It's a delay, and if we decide we're going to delay and and battle with the county and and it goes another month or so, this could kill everything. We do need commuter rail. This has already been started in Gaye County. They've had two stations. They're going to ramp it up to seven. We have one in Broward. We're going to be ramping it up to three in the south and three in the north for a total of seven. Palm Beach is waiting. This is a monumental project. Marine community, speaking to the marine community, they want to get this done ASAP. And it's not like, okay, we're going to delay it a little bit more in a couple of years from now. Already, they've gone from 24 to 60 trains. Marine community already has double the amount of trains at grade level that is, that's going down and affecting their marine community. And they they support something that is going to get this thing moving forward. This, this, this is a middle ground resolution. It doesn't say we're locking in anything. It does reaffirm once again that we do prefer tunnel, but if, no, whatever happens, county, we are subordinate to them. They are the ones who who control this project. We are a piece of it, but we're not, we, we're not the ones who are going to be managing it, and they do need support. We need our support together because if we don't, we're going to lose federal funding. And from what the county mayor and the commissioners say, they need at least a commitment from us that whatever they do, we're going to be together on the same page now. And we've heard over and over and over again today that we do need to work with the county, and for us to be taking a hard stance and alienating them is going to kill the project. We need to to start moving forward, and and we need to-
So you're prepared to compromise the city of Fort Lauderdale with a 55-foot bridge running through the middle in order to work with the county? Why doesn't the county work with us?
I'm not compromising anything, but you know what? As we get data, we could still have the, the tunnel option is still open. We're not closing anything. And let me tell you, we're going to start studying this, and when we, the BDO study comes out and we find out that it could be 1,000 things, it could be that the depth is not the right depth, that, you know, they do have to go to 80 feet, they can't go to 4% grade, it has to be 3%, the price might double back up to 1.6, 1.8 million dollars as they get into it, and we're locked, all our eggs in one basket, next thing you know, the whole project goes through, and we have compromised all of commuter rail. No matter how you slice it, Dean, we have to work with the county.
The county has to work with us, too. It's a two-way bridge.
Exactly. And this is, this is opening it up to say exactly what we feel. We prefer the tunnel, but we will work together with you regardless of what is, but it's still, we do prefer the tunnel.
But you'll, you'll accept the bridge?
It's not that we accept the bridge.
That's what you're saying in the resolution.
If the bridge is the only option, if the bridge, for whatever reason, is the only option, you know, if the, if it turns out after doing the study, we find out that it is a six, a $3 billion tunnel, we don't know that, and the study is not complete, whatever it is, we can't, we can't lock in now. We have to work with the county, whatever we go forward with. And again, a tunnel is our preferred option, and this is exactly what the resolution says. But we do have to work with the county, and we have to, we have to start working with them, finding common ground so we can get this thing started.
I've been working with them for about two years trying to find common ground, and we've been close at times, and then then marine industry realizes that the solution didn't work for them. So, you know, this isn't just coming up in the last few weeks. Everybody knows that here. So the point is that, let me ask you something. Let's say, let's say your roof is leaking, and you call a roofer, and the guy comes to your house and you say to him, you know, my roof is leaking, I think all I really need to do, need is a repair over here, but if you think I need a new roof, just let me know. So what is a roofing company going to do? Are they going to allow themselves to just do a roof patch, or are they going to do a new roof? Of course, they're going to do a new roof. So when you tell somebody that, oh, by the way, I want this, but I'm willing to accept that, you've already accepted that, and that's, and that's what the other side will rely on.
See, that's your, see, that's the whole mindset. Your mindset is that you're negotiating against them, and that's why they're a partner with us, the two of us. If it makes sense, I'm, no, I would imagine exactly what John says. We're in this together. If it makes sense, we're going to, obviously, we're going to go with the tunnel. We don't have the data yet, but they do need to know now, at least they could get started letting the federal government or whoever they're going to be applying, that we are working together with them.
Let me ask you a question, another question. Let's say they come up with numbers that their bridge project costs $500 million, and the tunnel project costs 1.2 million dollars, 1.2 billion, okay? They say, okay, you see, it's twice as much, we can't go with it. Would you find that acceptable?
I, if if we could fund it, Mr. Mayor, if it makes sense and it could be funded, if it can be funded and it makes sense, I think everybody's in agreement that the tunnel is the way to go. If it can be funded and it makes sense, I think everybody's in agreement that it's the way to go.
But now answer my question.
That actually, that actually brings up an interesting point, you know, because we're not paying a dime towards this thing, and and we're, you know, we're trying, we're trying to drive the outcome.
Neither is the county, by the way.
Well, they're paying, they're paying a quarter of it.
Oh, 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 it's our, it's our sales tax money that's paying for it, and who contributes 30% of that? Fort Lauderdale.
Understood, but it's, it's in their pocket now, so.
It's in their pocket, it's in, it's in one of their pockets. It's not coming out of general funds. You know that. I don't have to explain that to you.
But you know what I'd love to see? I'd love to see the DDA, which has spoken up so loudly all day long about how important this is to them, start contributing some money to it. I'd like to see us talk about, if this is something we want to do, let's put it out for a referendum. You know, what I've heard today is that everybody in the downtown wants this. Let's put it out for a referendum, wants a tunnel, so let's put it out for, so if it comes down to that, and the, and the county then says to us, hey, great, we want you to kick in $100 million. We put this on a referendum, and I want to see if the residents of Fort Lauderdale are willing to tax themselves for $100 million to make this a reality.
But it doesn't, you know, it doesn't work that way. You know-
We can get on the 2024 agenda. Of course we could. We can do a referendum.
Wait, wait, hold on a second. The funding, the funding components is the federal government at least 50%, the state 25%, and the county 25%. That's the, that's how the package is being, is being put together. And we could probably even get more out of the federal government depending upon the various applications that are available to us to to seek funding. So to say that we're going to be asked for $100 million is never going to happen, number one. Number two, I once thought of putting it on a referendum, like this next November, right? But do we have the time?
Yeah, absolutely.
No, I'm saying, I'm saying, according to Commissioner Sturman, time is of the essence. We have to, we have to decide now, 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 and if we don't, then, you know, we're going to lose everything, which I don't, I don't think is the case, but, you know.
So if we, but if they, I'm sorry, I apologize for interrupting. If they decide to go forward with the, with with the tunnel option, I'm sorry, with the bridge option, and we say, look, we really want you to, so let me, let me ask you, I'll throw a, I'll throw a curveball at my city clerk over there. Sorry, David. If we wanted to get something, if we wanted to get a referendum on the November, what do we have to have on June?
Yes. Well, that's easy.
Right, so we could, right, we could get a referendum on for June. I'd love to put this out as a GO bond, and let's see what the people of Fort Lauderdale really care about.
And we could do that, but is that going to compromise our eligibility for federal funding? That's the concern.
Well, we already have the grant in, so it shouldn't. In fact, I think, actually, I think if anything, it enhances our ability for federal funding because the one thing I know from every grant I've written is local money on the table boosts your grant. Anytime the local participation actually includes money, they rank you higher on your grant.
I understand that, but the local money is county money here. So the thing is that we, we can put it on referendum. I thought about doing that, and I'm, and and yes, we can, we can satisfy, but if the county says, okay, Fort Lauderdale, you want, you know, let's say 55% for a tunnel and 45% for a bridge, just using numbers right now, they'll say, well, that's nice, but we still don't want to do it. And they'll say, our bridge is 500 million, of course, not taking into consideration all the eminent domain costs.
Which they need to look at.
Which they need to, but they refuse to put it down there. We've asked them 100 times in meetings. I said, what are your eminent domain costs? Well, that's separate. We don't want to get into that. We're just talking about capital expenditures. Well, we learned today from our good folks at BDO that we don't even have to take any any land. We just do it all in the right of way of the FECR.
So so let me ask, in your scope of work, I think there was something in there that talked about evaluating the bridge options as well. Presumably, that includes some estimate of the eminent domain stuff, no?
Do you want to enlarge their scope of work? We can ask them to do that.
I think that's, actually, hold on, I got a copy of the scope of work here. I'm pretty sure that was in there.
I don't recall that, but Omar, do you remember?
Let me, let me go find that.
All right, take your time. It's early.
Yeah, yeah. Because I just got a copy of the scope of work, and I thought that was in the scope of work. Let me go back and look.
Yes, sir, we are happy to look at bridges and alternatives and look at property, impact on the property, and anything you would like to look at.
Because of time, I'm sorry.
Anything you want to look at.
I, I don't think it included bridge because of the time element.
It didn't, it didn't. I know that.
Not to get done by February, yeah, no, I agree.
Well, also, the amount of money we were paying them, it didn't, it didn't permit them.
We are not looking at bridge as a base case. I believe from information that we've gathered, I think the county is still evaluating the two flanking bridge as an option, and current option was out of right of way, and they are considering and still assessing what that bridge would look like. So this is my knowledge.
And we wouldn't be creating new bridge alternatives, but we would be, as you saw a pressage earlier, evaluating the current alternatives you've been given and bringing that data together and normalizing that so you have some sense and identifying frankly where the gaps are. And now, we don't have time where we could identify the actual land act cost of the bridges, but what we could do is identify the affected properties. And one of the things we spoke to you about previously when we were talking about this is engaging the stakeholders. Engaging the stakeholders includes those property owners and saying, what would it cost for us to come in and run bridges through these properties, or at least from high level?
I'm going to interrupt you for one second. I'm looking at your scope of work. Consider long-term viability of costs over the benefit of each option. The EIA study will show the socioeconomic impact of each option. Each option includes a bridge. So this is part of the scope of work.
Looking at socioeconomic, so what is the economic impact? What's the economic growth? What are the?
No, but hold on, I'll back you up. Consider long-term viability of costs over the benefits of each option. That says to me that you were supposed to evaluate the bridge, each option.
In the next stage.
I'm sorry, in what?
If the contract that's coming up, not in this particular, not the $75,000, the $75,000.
Nice try there.
The new one we're supposed to be talking about tonight. The $75,000 contract was simply to really get a steady state and evaluate the scope that it would take to get to something that was actionable for you. And so that would be coming up. And frankly, one thing I'll note, too, the conversations about the county, one of the obvious stakeholders that we would be viewing as an essential stakeholder to engage is the county because they are a partner to this, and we would see that if-
And they owe most of the data right now.
And if you, you chose to give us sort of the next stage of the contract, that would be an essential piece to that, is engaging with the county and saying what's possible and showing them the data we've developed and looking at the data they've developed and normalizing it, as you saw the foreshadowing earlier, into a spreadsheet where we can say, here's where this report says this, here's what it is, and comparing them, identifying gaps, and either working with the county and working with the other stakeholders to fill those gaps, or coming back frankly and telling you, okay, the, these were gaps in previous reports that may need to be filled, you know, but that's an iterative process, obviously.
Right, well, that actually raises a good point, because that was one of the questions that I had in this when I was looking at it, is you're talking about how you're going to, you know, independently analyze the costs and benefits of each, again, independently analyze the costs and benefit of each alternative option, and this study, this will result in a study free from bias. But then another descriptive material you have in here, you're talking about how you're planning on reducing the, the cost of the tunnel and then looking for gaps in the cost of the bridge. So that says, I want to bring the tunnel cost down, I want to bring the bridge cost up, and that is the antithesis of a study free from bias.
Sounds good to me. Please, please. Well, we can adjust the terms, obviously. We can, you know.
But again, so we got a contract, we got, I got a scope of work here that, you know, suggests that you're going to be looking at the viability of every option, and now what I'm asking about whether you're going to evaluate the eminent domain costs, that's part of the cost of the viability of the option. So I just-
We are happy to work and get that information, but just to clarify, that is an iterative process. The scope was developed as a broader scope, and depending on how we progress, we basically focus on the tunnel alternative as the core locally preferred alternative, which was, which is as per the older resolution for given as well. We're happy to look at bridges alternatives and and look at economic impact analysis as well, and also social.
I think we can't go back to the county and argue in favor of a tunnel when we're only showing them a one side of the analysis. If we're going to try and tell them that the tunnel is cheap and your bridge is expensive, we need to be able to demonstrate to them that the bridge is actually more expensive than they think it is based on, as the mayor said, the cost of eminent domain and the takings that are going to be contemplated.
We can do that analysis and present those numbers to you if that is needed.
If you don't have both of those in there, you're not, you're not doing a comparative cost analysis if you're not.
So we build out a broader scope so that as the county commissioners would require, we can accommodate those requests and and work for you so that the decision-making process is more handy on you. And sir, just to reaffirm, we are a large international firm. The numbers that we produce, we stand by them, the, in terms of anything that you believe, and these are rough numbers, we're prepared as a sort of, these are not final numbers, these are not class four estimates as well. So please, these are not exact apples-to-apple comparison as of right now, but in terms of still numbers, and we have still followed the FDA guidelines in terms of any contingencies to be considered, are, if you look at, we are aligned more with the FDOT's initial study of HDR, which had 25% of contingency. We had rather assumed a 30% contingency higher than that. had 25% of contingency, we had rather assumed a 30% contingency higher than that. And when you're doing apples-to-apple comparison, we believe all options should have the same level of contingencies as well. So if, if bridge has a contingency of 25%, tunnels should not have 40% of contingencies, all contingencies should be kept at equal level as well. So just to reiterate.
Let me, let me back you up on that though, because, you know, most of my family is in construction and they'll be the first ones to tell you, if you dig a hole in the ground, you got a lot more things that go wrong than when you're going vertical. When you go over the top of something, not a lot of contingencies. When you're digging a hole and you don't know what you're going to find when you get down there, it's like pulling a sheet rock off. You have no idea what the two-by-fours look like under the wall when you pull the sheet rock off.
Yes, the tunnels are not built like that. You do a detailed systemic analysis before you actually start digging anything and all the geometric analysis, anything you can find, you already know of. And the tunneling technology in terms of the digging holes, you need to design your TBM according to the land and geography of it. So you already know in advance how your underground is and what everything is.
The thing is, we don't know what's underground. Do you know about the water pipe that we hit up at the airport that took the water out for like most of the cities in Broward County? FPL did that, by the way, because they didn't know the water pipe was there. It was our main water line coming out of our well system. And thank God, somebody had a tree trunk and plugged it into the hole like a giant cord and saved the city.
Well, I can tell you, we know there's a river there.
So, so when you poke holes under the ground in a 100-year-old city, you never know what you're gonna find.
Okay, so, um, this is the thing. By the way, Vice Mayor, did you want to participate in this? I noticed that you were paying attention and you, you looked like you wanted to say something. We haven't been preventing you from speaking.
Um, no, you haven't been preventing me, but there are some things I want to add to the conversation. Just going back a little bit in regards to that original resolution that was done back in, I have January of 2022, when the previous commission, you know, passed the resolution. Within the notes, it does indicate that there was a question in, in response to Vice Mayor Morales's question, it was confirmed that the resolution does not pursue or preclude an option, other options for the new river crossing. So when we're saying you want to rescind and remove what was in the, what originally passed, it was in there that there will be other options as well. So I'm, I'm.
Where, where is it, where is it state that?
That is from the agenda on January 18, 2022.
But the actual resolution doesn't contain anything to that effect, though. We didn't pass, we didn't, we, that was just conversation.
The minutes, so when you read the minutes.
I, I understand that, but the, the actual resolution doesn't contain anything to that effect. There was, there were conversations, there may have been reflected in the minutes, but Vice Mayor, the, the final, the final product does not say anything. It says it right here, "The City Commissioner of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida urges the Florida Department of Transportation to recommend construction of a tunnel as the locally preferred alternative for the commuter rail crossing." Doesn't say anything about, but if you can't do it, then do a bridge. It doesn't say anything like that. So, and I'm saying, why do we want to change that? You know, if we want to have a, if we want to maintain a solid position, which I think we need to do unanimously tonight, if we want to maintain a solid position, I think it's important that we maintain our, our position that we adopted in 2022 and, and allow our folks to continue to vet their numbers and to also explore the, the authenticity of the numbers that were provided to the county regarding the cost of the bridge, because, because as you all know, there are major components that were not included. And I think that we owe it to our, to our community who came out tonight, who clearly have indicated their position, that we, we, you know, I understand, Commissioner Sturman, you know, we should, we should work with the county, you know, we've, we do try to work with the county, we've been trying to for several years on this project. We tried to also on the joint government center. We do on homeless initiatives, we do on a lot of things. But when we don't agree on something, we've got to be able to stand up for our own community. And when our own community comes out in, in strength and says, we do not want a bridge running through our neighborhoods, we've got to respect that.
Okay, well, to answer that.
And then, and the other part of my, my second comment, we kind of, we did allude to a reformation, putting something on the ballot for November. What would that look like and, and how would that financially impact the citizens of our community?
What, what would what financially impact?
If we add a referendum to the November ballot to vote on a tunnel or whatever.
If you had a question, does that?
Because it wasn't pointed out exactly what a referendum would actually spell out for the November ballot. What is that and what does it look like?
So I, I think if we wanted, just throwing around numbers out there, Vice Mayor, if we wanted to go to the county, and, and I'm not abdicating this number, but just for purposes of discussion only, if we were to say that we will put $100 million on the table, I think we just did $100 million bond issue for our police department two years ago. Interest rates have moved up since then, but I think that'd be a starting point for what that discussion is. So I would ask Finance Director or Budget Director to tell us what debt service runs us on our.
But I don't.
I see, I see Linda back there.
We don't have to go there.
Could I ask that question of?
Because what I'm, what I'm, the reason I'm saying that, I'm not trying to witness our community being impacted with an additional obligation financially.
Yeah.
Things are impossible for many people right now to sustain what they're dealing with now. And we're talking about adding on a tunnel that is not in our budget. That's, this is where I'm standing.
No, that was.
And I understanding, understanding that there are options for grants, fundings, but these are not, these are items are not guaranteed. These are things we have to apply for. These are things that we are waiting to be awarded. What happens if it's not awarded?
What happens if what? If we don't get the money?
We're not awarded funds. Who pays for this?
Vice Mayor, let me, let me just say this, based on my conversations with the people at the US Department of Transportation, that this commuter rail service is important to the strategic agenda for the Biden administration, but they also have other considerations. And if they're not going to fund a tunnel, I can tell you right now, they're not going to fund a bridge. Because there, and, and there are a lot of things that go into making decisions in this regard. And we've had a lot of different conversations on that, dividing communities, affordable housing opportunities, open green spaces, all kinds of things that are important to the infrastructure bill. And what we have to consider is what's best for the city of Fort Lauderdale. To me, that is the most important thing. I love the idea of, of commuter rail. I think it's great for the, for the region. Ultimately, I think it will help to spur, you know, proper development and help, maybe help reduce greenhouse, greenhouse gases and reduce our carbon footprint and all those wonderful lofty goals. But the bottom line is, I, if, if I'm living in Flagler Village as society and I don't want a train rumbling by my window, my sixth floor window, 100 times a day. And, and we shouldn't impose that on our people, just so that we can make everybody else happy. I'm not here to make everybody else happy, I'm here to make my people happy. And my people, you know, you say that a lot of people can't afford to live here, I just want, I want to share with you an anecdote that I have. And that is that I was having dinner a few weeks ago at a local restaurant and I was introduced to a mid-level executive at one of the cruise lines that is, that operates out of Miami. And he says, half his staff lives in Fort Lauderdale. They pay to have their staff go on Bright Line, which is not commuter rail, is Bright Line between Fort Lauderdale and Miami, to go to work every day.
So they'd love to have commuter rail.
They don't need it, because they, because the, the station is between Fort Lauderdale and Miami, they, they want to live in Fort Lauderdale. People want to live here. If they can afford it, they want to. And it's a lot more affordable here than it is in Miami, according to these folks.
Oh, no, it, it, Mayor, I agree with you completely on that. And if they had commuter rail line, they could also stop and pick a few folks in Hollywood on their way down to work as well.
Why should I fund that?
It's not.
Why should I fund that? Why should I impose on the people in our city, you know, destroy our historic neighborhood, destroy all the things that we've spent decades trying to build, so I can make someone in Hollywood or someone in, in Hallandale Beach or someone in, in Oakland Park happy? That's not my goal.
But I still don't see the concern for any of the other neighborhoods, whether they're down in District Four, District Three, or District One, that are still going to have 100 trains going by our windows.
Well, that's.
Who cares about that?
Okay, so let's talk about that, all right? Let's talk about that. So.
How are you going to quiet all those trains going past every house?
Well.
Every single family house and every condo along the rail line.
You're not, you're not. So the, so the question is, do we want commuter rail through Fort Lauderdale?
I say we all suffer equally, how about that?
I, I say that again?
We all suffer equally. If my district has to suffer, why is downtown exempt?
So I'm not.
Are they more important than my district?
I'm not wanting anyone to suffer, okay? But.
I'm, I'm being facetious here, Mayor, but the residents of District One, District Four, and District Three are no less impacted by train traffic than the folks that live downtown.
I don't.
And just because their condo is $2 million and my houses are $700,000, doesn't mean that they're entitled to any less consideration.
That's now what we heard from the Council of Fort Lauderdale Civic Associations this afternoon.
All right, that is true, but the point is, you know, I don't, we, there's no panacea to, to this, to this issue, okay? You know, if you want trains running through the city and you want, you know, dozens and dozens of them to accommodate commuter rail, there's going to be an impact, okay? But there's an opportunity to lessen the impact in downtown Fort Lauderdale.
On one neighborhood.
But you want, you want to put a tunnel through your neighborhoods, we'll do that. I mean, is that what you're advocating?
No, you won't.
No, is that what you're advocating?
Because you won't do it and nobody else will.
Well, the point is, though, that there are other.
I'm not here to save downtown.
Well, that's a great attitude.
This is your community, you're not just District One, you're Fort Lauderdale representative, you want to save everything, not just one area.
I do, I do want to save everything. And what I'm saying is, we work with the county to make that happen, because I think if we can demonstrate to the county that this is an affordable option, if the study that was done demonstrates the affordability of this option, I do believe we can present that to them and they will.
Capitulate? Mr. Keller, you're here, tell us, what are your thoughts? Where are you? I saw you here. There you are.
Mayor, do, do any of them?
Thank you for your questions here. Wait a minute, wait, wait, wait. So if we do a bridge, it doesn't help your neighborhoods, remember? You're worried about your neighborhoods?
Yes.
Your neighborhoods are still not helped out with the traffic flow if we build a bridge to downtown. So if it can, we can at least mitigate the impact in Fort Lauderdale with one section of it, your, your section, your district is still going to be impacted the same way, one way or the other. So if we can at least minimize the impact of the city of Fort Lauderdale by building a tunnel through the tunnel option, and why, why capitulate when all options have not been fully explored? So the resolution, with all due respect, Commissioner Sturman, I ask that the resolution that you introduced, I, I would vote for it if it ended at the, if section one ended at the end of the first sentence. Because I think that makes the most sense for the city of Fort Lauderdale.
I think commuter rail is important. I think commuter rail is important for the whole community. It's important for my district, it's important for downtown. There are people who live downtown that will be taking commuter rail up and down, using it on a regular basis, taking cars off the road. There are people who don't live downtown but work downtown that will be using commuter rail up and down. There are people that at Broward General that are going to be going to work or going to visit their patients or going to see a doctor. Commuter rail, like you said, you're not just looking after the city, we also have to look at the region as a whole.
No, I said just the opposite.
No, you said we have to look at the city.
We have to look at the city.
You said, no, I'm going to take away, you said, don't look at your district, look at the city. And I'm saying, don't just look at the city, look at the region also. There's a, we have an, it's a tri-county project that's going to dramatically change the landscape of South Florida. I'm not done, please.
I'm not saying anything, I'm just moaning.
It's a tri-county project that's going to change the landscape of South Florida, Dade, Broward, and Palm Beach County. Broward General is waiting to do the next step and we're going to have to cross the New River somehow. The county needs us to take the next step. And keep in mind a few things, regardless of what happens, we've been told by the county, by the MPO, by the Department of Transportation, this project's going to take a few years, it's going to change, it's going to continue to get studied. Regardless of what we decide today or tomorrow, or the next week or two weeks, it's, as we get more data, we're going to pivot and change it. And the tunnel option is still on the table. Well, if we, please, Dean. I've been told by the county mayor, as well as Lamar Fisher, as well as McKenzie, and Udine, that they need at least knowing that they could work with us now because they've run out of time. Middle of February is when they want to have everything going and they can't wait till February to start the process and get the commitment. It doesn't mean that we're committing to a bridge at all. It means the tunnel's our option, we're saying we're committed to working with them regardless of how it plans out. And we could still study it and even after they submit it, if it turns out we could convince it and it makes sense and the numbers are there and the tunnel is there, even if they say bridge, a tunnel is on the option, is still on the option. And the marine community is looking for us to get this thing started. Let me tell you, it's not tomorrow. They've gone from 24 to 60 trains a day and the marine community is being affected right now. We could say, no, we're not, we could do it, they could say, no, back and forth, back and forth, two, three months go down the line and boom, we now lose the window of opportunity for funding anything and that $600 million is now all going to fall on, on the taxpayer here and we lose the federal funding or matching grants and stuff. It doesn't stop anything, which we need to take the first step. And even if we have to pivot and we work with the county and if it turns out that, you know, let's say they said for the moment, let's just get started with the bridge and then we go to the tunnel, fine, we, we have time to do that. But we don't have time not to take that first step.
Can I tell you, can I tell you why that's impractical? And I'll let you speak, Commissioner Glassman. Because the investment community is not going to invest hundreds of millions of dollars along this corridor, knowing that there's going to be a bridge there. So you can say, oh, we may pivot in year three before they ever start construction, because they got to do environmental work and, and they've got to do underground geological testing and all that stuff. But the reality is that investors look three, five, 10 years ahead. They're not looking day by day to decide where they're going to invest, you know, 50 million, 100 million dollars, you know, collectively as much as a billion dollars along that corridor. So, so you may think that, that, you know, we have time, but the reality is, you have to think ahead and you have to, you have to understand that the investment community is not going to have any interest and that's going to crush.
No, we'll have, we'll know within a year. It's not going to take us three years to figure out where we're going.
The county is going to decide sooner, though.
What?
The county is going to decide sooner. They're going to say.
But it's not a lock. The county's going to apply, get the first step rolling, as we get more data, we will go and we will make a final decision, but we, we don't have, county has told me time and again, we need to at least start right now.
Apply for what, though?
Whatever they need.
They're going to apply for a bridge funding, they're not going to apply for tunnel funding. But we could.
We originally offered them this following. We said, let's all agree on a tunnel and if it turns out not to be feasible, then we'll, we'll reconsider. But they wouldn't even do that. I, you know, like, let's be partners in this. Let's, let's focus and go and step in, you know, hold hands in this, in this project and, and be in lockstep with one another. They refused. And then they come up with all these bogus numbers to try to sway the conversation. You know, I, you know, I appreciate, Warren, I appreciate your sincerity in this and I know, I know you're getting a lot of, you know, input from friends and consultants about, you know, the direction we should take, but let's look at our people. Let's look at what's important to our city. And I, we want to be partners with the rest of South Florida, but not when we are compromising everything that we have done in the last 30 years to create what we have today. It's going to go, it's going to really completely disintegrate. So, I mean, Commissioner Glassman?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and I appreciate.
Is this in your district?
I, I believe I do have some of this in District Two, yes. In fact, you know, right around all the transit-oriented development that I'm seeing right now coming like crazy is in District Two. But here's the deal, and I appreciate everybody's thoughts on this, but I think what we have to do is prioritize. We heard all afternoon, every single stakeholder, we heard all of the entities speak, we heard all of the residents speak. And, you know, I think that we have to figure out what is our critical path now going forward? What is the most important thing? When I look at these four resolutions that are in the backup, I'm thinking, we don't really have to pass any of them. We have, we have a resolution that we passed in 2022 that I think just stands fine today. We don't, we don't have to change it, we don't have to tinker with it. That, that is not part of our critical path going forward. Our critical path going forward is making sure that the county understands that we want to collaborate. We want to work together to solve this issue. Our critical path going forward is to make sure that we firm up the BDO report. Our critical path going forward is to make sure that the county is educated about what BDO has to say. That's our priority right now and getting the county to understand why it's so important to work together on this for many generations to come. My priority right now is not worrying about how Pompano is going to have transit-oriented development and that's why they're chomping at the bit to get something happening. That's not my priority. My priority is Fort Lauderdale. But if my priority is Fort Lauderdale and all of us are together that our priority is Fort Lauderdale, that will benefit the rest of the folks north of us that are looking to see something happen. When I look at the resolutions that are in front of us as possibilities, I am not in favor of passing any of them. I think the one from January 2022 reads just fine. If anything, if I had to change, I would look at the alternative three, because that accurately reflects what we heard this afternoon. accurately reflects what we heard this afternoon. That accurately reflects every single stakeholder that spoke to us today, and it adds a lot more teeth to it. I don't want to start talking about, okay, well, we'll go with the bridge. I don't want, I don't want, we're not ready for that right now. We're almost at a point where we have the information that we need, and I'm hoping that we will move forward again with BDO to firm all of that up, and then our job is to educate. I would ask you, the mayor, I would ask the city manager, to start organizing these meetings with the county and BDO. I also want to hear about your trip to Washington. We haven't heard nothing about, you guys went to Washington last week, how did that go? What happened? What did we learn? What are our chances of receiving funding that we need for this particular project? I need to hear that information. So, again, Mayor, I, I am not in favor of changing any, any of the resolutions that are in front of us, I think what we have is fine. I would also remind everyone that I remember speaking with all of my neighborhoods when the county came to us and asked for help for that surtax, for that one penny surtax. How much is sitting in that account now? We worked our rear ends off to make sure that Fort Lauderdale voters went out and supported that one cent surtax for transportation. So for us not to be able to get a piece of that, because I'll be very honest with you, I have not been happy to this point with what we have been receiving from that fund, it's like that money just keeps growing and growing, and Mayor, as you said, roughly 30%, if not more, of that money is from Fort Lauderdale. So we have to be able to tie into that, we have to make sure that the county understands that what our commitment was to that surtax still stands, but we have to be able to tap into that money, we have to be able to use that. I'm not in favor of any kind of ballot measure in November for our citizens. There's a lot going on next November, okay, on that ballot. I hate to remind everyone, we have a presidential election, all five of us are up for election. You're gonna throw something in like that? Remember how long it took us to try and educate the public about the parks bond? Remember how long it took everyone to educate the public about the police bond, the police headquarters bond? It's a lot of work, we, I don't think we have the time to be able to explain all of that, and I don't see actually what that does for us, because if you were successful in your meetings in Washington, if we're able to put those numbers together, because I consistently hear, when I talk to individual county commissioners, I keep hearing, show us the money, show us the number, show us what this is going to cost. But again, that's what we have to do. So again, our critical path, city manager, mayor, is you guys need to make sure the county understands that we need to collaborate. I asked at the last meeting, when the DDA came up and first talked to us about a shorter version of this tunnel, I said, please make sure that everything from that meeting got sent to the county. Did it? I don't know. Did the county get a chance to read all of that? I don't know. But I am very committed to making sure that we're working with our partners at the county. I'm hoping they will listen to what we heard today, because it's very compelling evidence, especially from Mr. Cohen, who worked for the county in a rather high position. This is, as has been said, this is a legacy project, a generational project. We have to do this right. For me, it's not a matter of just going the cheap route, it's not a matter of going the fastest route, because what I've seen in the difference of timelines from the shorter version of the tunnel versus a bridge, what are we talking about? Maybe a year, a year and a half longer? That's fine. I want to ask DDA to come up now and to talk about some issues that I've been hearing about, because I want to hear what DDA has to say, number one, it was the first time that we heard at that meeting about the shorter version, I want to hear what your ideas are about a TIF, I want to hear what your ideas are about funding, we heard from one of the commissioners tonight, what can DDA bring to the table, I want to hear all of that. So I see Mr. Miller just coming up, if you could expound upon that, I think that would be very valuable for us to hear.
John Miller.
Press the button.
Press the button. John Miller, General Counsel, Downtown Development Authority, with me is Jenny Mordeone, President and CEO. So I'll go with the TIF part. We, we've been looking at, we kind of forecasted that this, you know, coming with additional resources would be probably important at some point, and I think one idea is what Commissioner Herbst is saying, and put something on the ballot, that's one idea. Another idea we may want to explore further, we've looked at it kind of at a, at a high level, I don't want to say back of the napkin, it was more than that, is to look at a city TIF along the route of the commuter rail, the length of basically, the length of the city from border to border. And we looked at approximately a quarter mile on each side of the line, and tried to get a present value of what that could raise. And obviously, it's speculation, but, but our estimate was you could possibly raise 50 to 100 million potentially with that, and obviously, we're gonna need something like a Walter Duke to study it, look at the projections moving forward, but, you know, obviously, that's, you know, an expanded area, and again, that would be a policy decision from the city, but, you know, I know the discussion is about the penny tax and whose money it is, but the fact of the matter is, once it goes to the county, it's really, you know, they'd consider it their money, like it or not. So, I mean, really, to move the needle, you're gonna have to come with some other resources, and either, you know, the ballot question or a TIF, and get their attention, and when you do so, I think that increases the possibility of moving the needle, you know, on the, on the tunnel itself, you know, to come with additional dollars, because that gets their attention if, and, you know, this was an issue that came up at the joint meeting, you know, are you backstopping, what are you guys doing? So I think the TIF is possibly a cleaner way of doing it, because it's not taxing anybody any additional dollars. The question really is gonna be forecasting on your budget moving forward, you know, how's that impact the city? So that's one idea, but I'll turn it over to Jenny about the other questions.
And by the way, John, just to tie in on that, so, you know, Mayor, you made a comment before about investors along rail lines, and I can tell you, because I've studied this in, at, at length, so property values along rail lines everywhere in the world go up dramatically. People want to live near trains, that's why transit-oriented development is so successful. Every place they've ever run a rail line and put a station has exploded. In fact, I will point you to the history of Florida East Coast Railway. Every city in the state of Florida is because Henry Flagler built that railway line from St. Augustine down to Miami in the 1880s and 1890s. Every city grew up around the train stations.
But not elevated.
But not elevated.
Not elevated. Touche, Mr.
But rail, but rail, actually, it is, it's elevated down to the Keys, I've been over there, so.
Yeah, where the fish live.
There's a bridge that goes down to the Keys.
Yes, okay, thank you.
But, but, no, the point is, though, that, that rail drives development. So those investors that are worried about rail, I promise you are salivating at the opportunity to buy all up and down from Miami to Palm Beach, and the folks that, that invest here, their money is fungible, it invests just as easily in Deerfield and Pompano and everywhere else. They will take their money and go where the economic opportunities are.
That's exactly what they're, that's exactly what I'm afraid of, because you heard the investor community today, they, there were several representatives, several developers who said they wouldn't, they would be negatively impacted by something like this. Look, the, we all, you know, bringing the tunnel, bringing the, the train line underground, you know, it's not rocket science. We already have a tunnel, by the way, and it, and tunnels are built everywhere, so it's not like a big deal. Why we're making, why governments are making this such a big deal, you know, I agree, everywhere you go, Henry Flagler settled Florida with his rail line, right? In all the cities, Fort Lauderdale was built on the rail line, Pompano, you go right up the line, all the cities developed along the rail line.
Daytona, New Smyrna-
Exactly, all of them, right?
Every single one.
But in, but, but elevating it is a whole different dimension, literally.
Right.
And, and that's what creates the negativity and the urban blight, that we are, we don't, we have to learn from the mistakes of other communities over the last 200 years, let's try to not redo those mistakes, let's do better, we have the opportunity, and let's, let's look forward in how we can best take advantage of these options.
Yes. You go ask Pompano Beach if they would like to see, considering all of their redevelopment on Atlantic Boulevard, and in and around their new downtown that they're forging, and MLK Boulevard, you ask them how they would like an elevated bridge running through all of that redevelopment right now, and what that would do to the future of their plans for redevelopment, and I think we all know what the answer is, but Jenny was about to tell us some information.
Come on back, Jenny, don't run away.
Not running. Just briefly, I think it's important to address that while we were looking at potentially other additional financing sources for the project, we were also looking for experts that could potentially consider a different design concept for the tunnel. So recognizing that so many studies had been done on simply the four original options, we did want to get some input, and this was well before we knew BDO was engaging on some alternative concepts as well. What I presented back in November by Dr. Gary Brierley was a shorter, more shallow tunnel, still highly conceptual, we talked about the unknown unknowns at that time, but simply to push forward a new alternative that was worthy of discussion, consideration, and what we, what we did, I'll just end here, was also present that to County Mayor Fisher and administration after we received some initial feedback from our consultant.
Thank you. And Mayor and City Manager, are we going to hear about what you learned on your recent trip to Washington DC, and what the feasibility is in terms of funding?
It wasn't, it wasn't, it was just, it was simply a meeting with Congresswoman Sheila Scherfless McCormick. She couldn't meet with us here, I had to go there. So, and that's where we had a lengthy discussion about the project with her, her staff, her, her chief of staff down here also participated by phone, and, and as a result, the Congresswoman is 100% on board with the tunnel option.
Okay, so-
And she is, she spoke virulently against a, a bridge, and more articulately than I could, and, and, and I felt that that was a successful visit, because we're getting people that are gonna be voting on federal funding, you know, realizing how important it is to move forward with the most obvious option, which is the tunnel.
So do you, do you two see, and by the way, I'll have to get you Zoom in the future, do you two see a path in terms of finances going forward that's realistic from the federal government? Because we know that we're on a little bit of a short timeframe, we have no idea what's gonna happen next November, but we know who's there now. What do you see as that path, that critical path of funding going forward from a federal and state level?
You want me to answer that?
Either one.
Okay, I'll answer, because I know you can't talk, so. So over the last couple of years, we've been having conversations with US DOT people, and one of the things they told us was, you know, you need to, first of all, we took, we took basically classes on how to prepare these grant applications, they invited us, you heard Ben Rogers talk about that earlier today, and, and they also gave us the million-dollar grant. And why did they give that to us? Because they said, you need this, this study to be able to put together the facts necessary in order to justify a successful application for a capital cost funding. So now, why do I know that? Because at the US Conference of Mayors this past spring, I met with one of the US DOT officials who was actually going to give the grants out, and he said, in order, if we, if we feel that you have a viable, a viable project, we'll give you this money. If we don't think you have a viable project, or we're not gonna see, see you through to the end of it, we're not gonna give you this money. And what did they do? They gave us the money, because they saw this project as a viable project through the end. And based on his words and words of other people in the department, you know, they're waiting for us to move forward, to put together this application, you know, no one from the county has gone there, by the way. No one from the county, I mean, only the MPO, Greg Stewart, he has gone up there, but I don't know of any other commissioner, or I don't even know if the county administrator has met personally with US DOT people, I don't know, she may have, I don't know. But all I know is that in my conversations, especially at the US Conference of Mayors, because I met with multiple transportation officials from Washington who happened to be at the, at the conference, you know, they're all waiting for us to submit this application.
And here's my concern, and this is again, why I want to stress collaboration with the county. Going forward, what would even be the chances? Let's say the county moves forward with an application on a bridge, and, and Washington and Tallahassee know that there's no consensus in the city level for a bridge, wouldn't that doom that grant application, and then where would we be? Where would we be? And that's my fear.
That's why, that's why we need to be partners in this.
Yes, no, I, that's, that's exactly what I'm saying, I'm asking these questions rhetorically. That's my concern, that I'm hoping the county's listening, because we have to go forward together in this project, or else I don't think either of us will be successful.
And that's why I've been saying for over a year to the county, let's just focus on the tunnel, and if it, if we find that it's not working out, if the federal government's not interested, if the, if the, the costs are prohibitive, then we opt, we'll switch to Plan B. We understood that.
Yes.
But we never were given that option to begin with.
I understand.
We never given that chance.
I agree, I, I understand, and that's, that's our job. As I said earlier, that's our critical path, is to bring forward all this information, have that meeting with you, the city manager, county administration, the mayor of Broward County, whoever, and also make sure that they understand what we're learning from BDO, make sure they understand how everyone that spoke today felt, and why this is so important. We have to be seen as the city that wants to make this work for everything north of us. We, we have to make sure that everyone understands that we do value what this will bring to the entire region, but we also have to make everyone understand our sensitivity to what is realistically going to happen if the county moves forward with a bridge through our downtown and the immediate neighborhoods. That has to be so clear, because that, I think, is of paramount importance, and that, that's our task, that's our goal, that's gonna be what we have to convince people of, that's all. Thank you.
And I think your suggestion about just deferring our eight and going with what we have already is probably the best solution to this right now, so.
I'd like to call the question for our eight.
All right, is anything, Vice Mayor, do you have anything further to add?
No, thank you.
Okay, okay, so, is there a resolution on the floor? I don't, I don't-
Yes.
Did you make the resolution?
Yep.
Okay, all right, call the roll. This is option four, I think you said?
Yes.
Exhibit four?
Yes.
Exhibit four.
A resolution to City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, rescinding and replacing Resolution Number 22-20, affirming a tunnel as the City of Fort Lauderdale's locally preferred alternative for the commuter rail train crossing the New River in the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, recognizing Broward County as the lead agency for obtaining funding and operation of this portion of the rail project, supporting Broward County in advancing a mid-level Baskel Drawbridge as a locally preferred alternative if the tunnel is not feasible, and providing for distribution, rescission of conflicting resolution provisions, and an effective date. Commissioner Herbst? Commissioner Glassman?
This is not a Fort Lauderdale-centric resolution. This resolution should not pass. This resolution basically is wave the white flag. This is not the way we should be operating at this point in time. I think this will be very detrimental to our efforts, and I am not in favor of this resolution because of all of this language about supporting Broward County, Baskel Drawbridge as the locally preferred alternative, all of that is not necessary at this point in time. At a later point in time, when we flesh out more information, this might be timely, but at this moment in time, this is a very bad resolution for our city, and I think we will hear that from all of the folks that we heard today earlier, especially our residents. This is not listening to all of the residents that came forward today to speak to us. This is being death to all of the testimony that we heard today. This is not a good move, and I am vehemently opposed to this resolution, no.
Vice Mayor Basely Pittman?
I'm voting yes, I don't necessarily, I don't agree with everything my colleague just said. I believe this is an opportunity to collaborate and move forward. My vote is yes for this resolution.
Commissioner Sturman?
I'm gonna vote yes.
And Mayor? I vote no. So it's 3-2 in favor of the resolution. Public hearing one.
Very sad for our city.
Well, it's, it's not over yet, so.
But not a good move.
And, and, and I would say, as, as you've all heard our earlier discussions today, so I think we need to take what BDO has done, I think we need to sit down with the county, show that to them, and I'm happy to participate in those conversations. I'm happy to go and, you know, advocate on behalf of the tunnel if it is demonstrably less expensive, if the numbers can be vetted to everybody's satisfaction, and I will support that 100%, so.
Well, demonstrably less expensive than the bridge? Even if the tunnel is more expensive, there are-
No, demonstrably less expensive than what the previous have studied, the previous studies have shown it to be.
Okay, because, because you can always make a bridge look cheaper than a tunnel, and, and maybe that's a given, because the capital costs for a bridge may be different than the capital cost for a tunnel, but it's all the other intangibles, it's all the other consequences of eminent domain, of, of, you know, of the urban landscape, of dividing communities, those, those things don't have a price tag to them.
Well, the one thing I do think we can put a price tag on, and we talked a little bit about this before, is I really do think we need to bring in somebody to look at the cost of potential takings. I mean, if we need to take money from ex La Solas, that could be a billion dollars right there, and that may kill a bridge entirely just based on that. So I think we need real numbers, I need, think we need a comprehensive analysis, I think we need to look at the cost of the takings that are associated with this.
Is that, we gonna assign BDO with that? We'll do that?
We can do BDO with that, we can, we can task that with Walter Duke. Somebody needs to come up with a, a real number for the county to look at when they're moving forward with this. I think that's a critical part of having an informed, intelligent conversation. The thing that I stress all the time is decisions with data. Without data, we can't make good decisions. We need more data, let's get it. We need more data, let's get it.
Yeah, but the thing is, John, that, you know, a lot of these issues will not be, a lot of these questions cannot be answered until years in advance. And once you set the path to go in one direction, it's very hard to turn around. So I just hope you did, you three did not write the epitaph of the downtown Fort Lauderdale.
Well, I think that to do a tunnel, we need to work together. And I, I think.
But after you've shown your hand, Warren.
Dean, Dean, please.
After you've shown your hand.
Dean, Dean, Dean? I think we need to work together. I think the rhetoric that was going on was pushing us in different directions. I think two sides were digging in further and further, and I think maybe it could be out of spite. I don't know what it is. But I think this is at least an indication we want to work with the county. And I think if we want to do a tunnel, I think this is the best way to go about it, saying with the Broward County, telling them, we want to work together, open it up, and now go, show them the data, and now start work. This is, I think, our best shot of getting the tunnel, working with them. I mean, fighting with them is, is not getting us where we need to go. I think this actually, contrary to what you think, and I'm hoping this is, if we do have the hope of getting the tunnel, showing that we want to work with them is, is the way to go. Because we can't do it without them, and we need to show them that we were willing to work with them.
Let me ask you a question. You know, the, the capital costs of one project are going to differ from the capital costs of another project.
Correct.
Do you believe that there are certain intangible costs that cannot be quantified that should go into the calculation here?
No, I've said this before. Even if the tunnel is more money, even if the tunnel is more money, that is still my preferred option. It's not just money. It's like you say, there's intangible things that, and, and I would love to see a tunnel, like you said, but we do need to partner. And I think it, it's not just about money, Dean. The tunnel, if it's more money, like you said, there's intangible things that benefit the community. I've always loved a tunnel, and I would love to see a path forward with the tunnel. And I'm hoping that this is, I mean, I think we all want what's best for the city, it's just a different vision, how to get there. And I think, in my heart, I think this is, this is the best way to get where we need to go.
That's not what your resolution says. Not at all. That's right.
So, so let me ask you this. What happens if the county, and justifiably so, they come back and they say, well, the tunnel's going to cost, the, the tunnel's going to cost X, and a bridge is going to cost half X? And you say, well, there are intangibles that you can't put a price tag to. And they say, well, those are too speculative. We're not going to include those. And that's, and that's, that's the end. You see, when you show your hand like that, and when you, when you fail to comprehend the, you know, the, the holistic nature of what we're, what we're going to end up with, the unintended consequences are, are, are really, really impactful. So.
But we're no worse off than we were before.
Yes, we are.
Yeah, we are.
Yes, we are, Warren. Yes, we are. You know why, Warren? Because you're operating from a position of weakness. You are, you are not just showing your hand, as the mayor keeps saying, but you are showing that you're really not fighting for what the city wants. You are showing that you are not representing your residents. You are showing that you're saying to your constituents, screw you, I don't care, I'm going to ruin your downtown, I'm going to ruin your redevelopment downtown, and you know what? Let's just share it with the rest of the cities to the north.
Mayor, at this point, can't we move on? We've already voted on this. Why are we here to discuss?
Yes, let's move on to discussion.
I think that's a bit much what's being said. We made a vote, and we're, we're moving forward.
Yep.
And now you're moving into opinions of what you think the residents are going to say.
Yep.
I'm offended by that. If you would please, let's move on. Thank you.
No offense, no offense meant. I'm just reflecting what I heard all day today.
Steve, let's move on.
Just put it out.
I'm good.
Okay. All right, let's move on to M9. Let's move back to M9. This is a motion approving agreement with BDO USA.
I would like to move that with a, with a little direction for the city manager.
What's that?
I would like to direct the city manager to move forward with this, but to loop in the county, with Broward County, to, to go ahead with BDO as a joint venture with us and the county with BDO. I mean, I want to set this up so this is, this will succeed, and.
How does that work?
Well, right now, we're doing it without the county, and I don't want it to them say that they're not going to look at this. I want the county to be part of this, and I want, I want them to, to be a partner with us, and what, I don't want it to get.
You want them to pay for half of it?
Sure. Yes, the share, the, the cost sharing with the county, too.
And that's going to happen. So, you know, we can certainly instruct BDO to, to, to include the county in conversations if they, if the county agrees to do it. There's no, there's no requirement on their part to do it. But I do think, if we, to make sure we're gaining the sense of what the commission has said, that we should enlarge their scope of employment to include investigation with regard to the bridge concept.
So, all right, I just want to add that we have a very limited amount of time, as it is. You, these, these people have to do this in two months.
Right.
All right? Realize that the other joint study took, I think someone said here, eight, seven months? They're compacting all this effort in two months. So I, I just want us to be conscious, or you all to be conscious about that. Because I, and, and BDO to also confirm that they can achieve all the additional scope of work.
If it's possible.
And Ben Rogers.
If it's possible.
And Ben Rogers is going to talk about the scope of work that you are about to consider right now and, and, and vote on.
Okay.
So Greg, just to back you up, though, because again, as I read from the scope of work, it involved evaluating these other options. So that's the scope of work of what we're now being asked to approve. Am I, am I correct?
Yes.
Okay. So this doesn't involve any additional work. This is the scope of work in the $325,000 agreement that we already approved. If that's not the case, then I need to know that.
So let me add some context. So this, this agreement has a scope of services Exhibit A. And Exhibit A, the purpose talks about submitting an application for the tunnel alternative. So if there is an, an interest on submitting bridge, then we probably need to amend some of the descriptions in the purpose section and the description of the project. As for the tasks, or the available tasks, then the notice of funding opportunity has not been released yet. And so what we've done is we built a menu of options. I believe there's 18 of them altogether, that, or 19 of them altogether, that once we determine what the notice of funding opportunity requires for the grant application, then we'll, we'll pick which menu or options we want to have BDO perform. And so Commissioner Herbst, to your point, in section, or Task 16, there's some language about comparative analysis between the bridge and the tunnel. I don't know if that's deep enough for what the commission wants or not on the, on the bridge analysis. And so that's why I just want to bring it to your attention. Right now, the majority of the scope is only focused on a tunnel.
All right. Because like I said, I'm just, I'm looking at the indicative scope of work here.
Right. But the time, the time is going to, the time is going to constrict that. If we had a year, I guess we could do that. Okay. There's been a motion, a motion has been made? Has a motion been made?
Yes, yes.
Yes. Do I hear a second?
Is this amended at all, though? What is the motion exactly?
Well, it can't be amended, because, well, I mean, it's amended to say we want the county to participate. Well, if they want to, of course.
Okay, fine. Fine. Who's talking? Oh, yeah.
Did you want to add in their obligation to look at eminent domain acquisition costs?
Yes.
Yes.
That needs to be added.
It's amended to include that.
Yeah. So.
Economic impact, I think, is the phrase.
So moved.
So Task 10 right now is about right away, identify right away challenges, lay-in acquisition costs and options, provide risk mitigation strategies. This includes detailed property valuation assessments. Is that clear? Is that?
That's enough.
That's what I thought was in there, and I thought we were getting that as part of the contract, so.
Oh, now it's specified.
And, and again, this is just a menu of options that we'll pull from as we are. Not all, 19 of these items will be advanced. It's going to be on an hourly basis, based off of whatever the funding opportunity needs.
Okay, so.
Well, they need, you know, you know, from our, you hear from our discussion what our priorities are.
Right. This is, this is a critical component of the analysis that gets done, because I, I do think it's quite possible that the eminent domain.
Component.
Component. Thank you, Mayor, for helping me out there.
It's late.
It's getting late. The eminent domain component could kill the bridge option entirely when we find out that doing some of these takings is going to add a billion dollars to the cost of the project. If that's the case, that's information that will, I believe, drive the decision-making process. So that, that's a critical component.
I, I'd like, if I might, Mr. Mayor? Just a quick clarification. So this is an hourly contract, and we were trying to work within constraints of the city's budget, but the 325, thus the menu of 16 items. Thus, you saw, we absolutely can do, the reality is, we can do much, well, pretty much everything we've discussed here.
I used to be a consultant. We'll do as much as you're willing to pay for. I get it.
Well, that's the punchline.
I was with BWC. I get it, I know how it is.
Is that, that in fact, I mean, we want to help you get actionable data, and develop it, and bring together everything you've had, so that you can have the discussions with the county, and so that you can come to a decision. So I just want to be clear, like, we want to do it, and, you know, there may be conversations that you all need to have with regard to the frankly, current amount of money dedicated to it. Mother Moore needs to be there, but we'll work as hard as we can, day and night, to get it done.
So can I ask you to shoehorn something else in there? Operational costs, O and M? Was that in the, was that in your original?
Yes, yes, that, that will be in part of the original.
Yes, I thought it was, but I just want to make sure.
Yes, that is.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so has motion on the floor been seconded? Any further questions, as amended? Any further questions?
Mayor, I just want to make sure, and we're, and we're going to include the county, but I, their work is, again, has a deadline of February.
Right.
So if the county is unable to schedule, I mean, we're going to do everything possible.
We're inviting them to participate.
Correct.
Right.
In a spirit of partnership and collaboration.
Right. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beasley-Pitman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Okay, before I vote, I just want to reiterate. For this to have success, I just want to make sure that we include the county, because whatever we have here, if we're going to push for the tunnel, no, they, they, I don't want to do, I want them to buy in, so that way we could share that with them. So to maximize our chance of success of this, to include the county. Because if this is what we're pushing for, to get them to buy in for a tunnel. Yes.
And Mayor Trent Tals?
Yes. And the motion's approved? Get to work. Thank you so much for being here tonight, gentlemen, and for answering our questions. We really appreciate it. And please try to help us through this. We, we thank you. Our daily leave off. Okay, public hearing one. Resolution approving lease agreement for city-owned property located at 601 Seabreeze Boulevard to Marine Industries Association of South Florida. Do we have to do disclosures on this or anything like that?
It's not quasi initial.
You know, can I just say something? There were a number of people that signed up to speak, but.
On our eight.
But most of them spoke already at this afternoon. What was your answer, Tom?
This is not quasi initial, so disclosures are not required.
Okay. Do I have to move to close public hearing, though?
Motion to close public hearing.
Yeah. Do I hear a second? Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay. Okay. The motion to close public hearing on PH1. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner, Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beasley-Pitman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Mayor Trent Tals?
Yes, and public hearing on, on PH1 is now closed. Someone like to introduce the resolution?
Introduced.
A resolution to City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida authorizing execution of a lease pursuant to Section 8.13 of the City Charter of Real Property located at 601 Seabreeze Boulevard, Fort Lauderdale, Florida 33316, as more particular described below, to Marine Industries Association of South Florida, and to be used for purposes consistent with the public good for an initial term of 10 years with four 10-year renewal options and an initial annual rent of $30,000 per year, and subject to further terms and conditions, repealing any and all resolutions in conflict here with authorizing execution of same by the proper city officials and providing for an effective date. Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beasley-Pitman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Mayor Trent Tals?
Yes, and PH1 is now approved. PH2, it's a public hearing, resolution approving a sublease agreement for city-owned property located at 501 Seabreeze Boulevard to International Swimming Hall of Fame. No one has signed up to speak, and when, would someone please move to close public hearing? It's been moved.
Second.
Seconded. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beasley-Pitman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Mayor Trent Tals?
Yes, public hearing is now closed on PH2. Someone like to introduce the resolution?
Introduced.
Please call the roll.
A resolution to City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida authorizing execution of a sublease pursuant to Section 8.13 of the City Charter of Real Property located at 501 Seabreeze Boulevard, Fort Lauderdale, Florida 33316, to International Swimming Hall of Fame, and to be used for purposes consistent with the public good for a term of 30 years, and subject to further terms and conditions, repealing any and all resolutions in conflict here with authorizing execution of same by the proper city officials and providing for an effective date. Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beasley-Pitman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Mayor Trent Tals?
Yes, and public hearing two is now approved. OFR1 is the first reading of an ordinance amending various provisions of Chapter 20, Article 4, Division 3 of the City of Fort Lauderdale Code of Ordinances. Someone like to introduce the ordinance? Good night, gentlemen.
Introduced.
It's been introduced.[1578.33] It's been introduced. Anyone have any questions? No one signed up to speak? Please call the roll.
An ordinance of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida amending chapter 20, article four, division three of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida by amending the City of Fort Lauderdale Police and Firefighters Retirement System to implement provisions of collective bargaining agreements between the City of Fort Lauderdale and collective bargaining units representing police officers and sergeants, police, lieutenants and captains, firefighters and battalion chiefs and providing for severability, repeal of conflicting ordinance provisions and an effective date. Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sterman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalles?
Yes, and OFR one is now approved. OSR one, second reading ordinance amending the City of Fort Lauderdale Unified Land Development Regulations to revise the terms of appointment on the Planning and Zoning Board and the Historic Preservation Board. This is a second reading. Someone like to introduce the ordinance?
Introduced.
And Mayor, can I speak to this for one second before we take this up for a vote?
Sure.
So I've worked with the Attorney's Office on this, and there's one point of clarification that I want to add to this discussion. The intent with this is that as we change the terms to coincide with the commission terms, that we extend the chairmanship of the current incumbents in those roles to the new end date, because otherwise we could potentially have somebody who, you know, was appointed in May and now will be out this December, and that was not the intent of what we were, what we were going for.
Okay.
So the intent is to extend then to the following December.
You understand that?
Is that, is that sufficient for?
Okay, thank you.
Wait, I just have a question for the Attorney's Office. So people that are, people that normally would be term limiting out after six years, this May are going to go till the following December?
Dwayne Spence, Deputy City Attorney. So what this ordinance does is it increases the term that is allotted to board members from three to four years. The existing board members are appointed by resolution, and those resolutions have specific time periods. What we will do is, and those time periods are, were limited to three years based on the prior ordinance. With the adoption of this ordinance, we will bring back resolutions granting an additional year to each of those members on those boards. And in order to get to the other piece of alignment with the city commission terms, because your, your stagger terms are now terminating May of 2024, 2025, and 2026, as through attrition, we'll start aligning the newly appointed members with the terms of office as indicated in this ordinance. So the existing members will, well, terms will be increased to give each of them a four-year term, but note that they are also subject to the possible removal if there's a new elected official that comes in and desires to replace them within the six months.
So you're going to extend the people that are there now that normally would be term limited out this May, May 2024, you're going to extend them till when?
Each, everyone's going to get an additional year, and it's going to come, it's going to come with a separate resolution. So it's a separate action that will.
But they were appointed under certain circumstances where they were appointed for two, three-year terms, right?
Two, three-year terms.
So some of them are already in their sixth year of service, correct?
Yes.
So then I'm not in favor of that, because you're extending their term past the election of the next city commission, correct?
Yes, that would, that, but they are also subject to
Yes.
the code that gives the prerogative of the newly elected city commission to replace them within six months of their election.
Yes, but when they were appointed, they were appointed under certain, basically a certain resolution that dictated that they would be appointed for two, three-year terms, right? So now we're saying at the end of their term, oh, here's an extra year?
It's going to last if the newly elected commissioner allows it to continue.
Well, no, but you're actually, but you're, at the very least, you're giving them from May till November extra, May, June, July, oh, there's a time. You're giving them an extra seven months.
For, for a few members, yes.
For a few.
So, so what, what ends up happening if you do not extend those members that are set to expire in May of, of this year coming, is that you'll have a board that can't meet quorum for that time period unless you appoint someone for that six-month period, six-month period.
Well, why wouldn't we? Why would we leave it open and not have a quorum? Why wouldn't we appoint in May? How many people are we talking about? Do we know?
I think it's about four people on the planning and zoning, is it four people on the planning and zoning board, and?
I, I just think it's better to leave it the way it is, and then the next commission can deal with whatever they want to do in December, and if people are expiring in May, it's up to this commission to appoint new people. So there's a quorum, right? I mean, for seven months or?
So.
I, I'm just not in favor of changing the rules midstream for people that have, that were appointed under another certain set of rules.
I think what Commissioner Herbst was trying to accomplish, get screwed up with the scenario that, that Commissioner Glassman just presented. I mean, it makes sense what Commissioner Herbst wants to do.
It's alignment is what I'm trying to get to.
Yeah, but, but then it gets screwed up with the.
But, but I think, I think the point that Dwayne made is, any new commissioner then has the right to remove anybody within their first six months anyway. So if they don't want to keep a holdover, which is what, you know, we used to call them years ago, if you don't want a holdover, you, you have the right to remove that person. And, and when, you know, when I brought this up.
Well, that's true. You can.
Right, you can remove. When I brought this up, you know, we, we focused on P and Z and historic preservation, because these are quasi judicial that require a deep level of technical expertise in these positions. It's not like some of our other boards where, you know, they're, they're less impactful on people. If you're on, you know, you know, I'll arbitrarily pick one, you know.
Community appearance?
Community appearance, right. It's not the end of the world if they're, if you don't get your wow award. But, you know, for these kinds of issues with require.
Stay for yourself.
And, and no disrespect to, to the wow awards. But, no, I, I do think, I do think these two boards in particular perform a critical function, and I think it's important that we maintain the expertise of people who have been there just a little bit longer, and it's not extending it in perpetuity, but just a little bit longer to coincide with our commission terms. That was what I was trying to accomplish.
And I understand. I, I just think it's bad precedent to go back and change the process by which people were first appointed to a board. I, I just, I have an issue with going back and just undoing something that was in place for whatever, it's four people, six people, whatever. Those people were appointed under certain ordinances, resolutions that specifically said why they were being appointed, how long their terms were. I don't think you can just randomly, I guess you can, because you're saying we can, but I just don't think it's good practice. I don't think it, I don't think it's good to just go back and randomly do something like that and just change something like that when you've already set the rules and the parameters by which people were appointed to a board, especially.
Right, but we're trying to synchronize.
I understand. Well, you'll still be synchronized. I'm not worrying about the synchronization. You'll be fine. I, I just don't think it's good precedent to go back and undo something like that towards the end of these terms. It just doesn't make sense to me, and I think that as commissioners and the mayor, we'll know how to deal with making sure there are quarums on these boards, and then if you're fortunate enough to be reelected, you're just fine. You keep it going. If new people come in, it's their prerogative. I just think that's a much cleaner, I think it's much cleaner.
So let's come to some consensus here.
Okay, I just think it's much cleaner. Okay.
Let's come to a consensus, gentlemen. What do you want to do?
I'm happy with it the way it's drafted with the, the understanding. I, I'm, I'm fine with what I, with what we proposed and what we've discussed as it is.
Meaning?
Meaning that their terms will be extended and to coincide with the new term dates. I, 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 I understand what Commissioner Glass, right, I understand what Commissioner Glassman is saying. I, I, I don't necessarily share the concern for an additional couple of months. You know, the only other way around that is just to say, well, if somebody's term limited out and I have a temporary six-month appointment, then that I could appoint that person to finish out that six months, but then you've got the term limit problem. So will we waive the term limit problem so I can have them fish out the six months before I appoint somebody new? I don't want to appoint somebody for six months and then have them out.
That's just, that's part of what, when you do a realignment like this, I've done
it in Plantation in Dana Beach, it does have this complexity of doing something you didn't want to do, but it doesn't have a precedent, because you don't always go back and realign things like this. This is a new thing that will start. You'll have these people in for another seven months, and that's not a long time. They, they never sought that. You're doing it to keep the quorum and the stability of the boards.
I believe the stability and the quorum will remain, but I also believe that good policy states that you just make this effective going forward with new folks that are appointed. You just don't go back in time and undo, undo the process by which people were appointed and under what conditions people were appointed. I think this is just bad precedent. That's all. I'm, I'm not in favor of this. I'm in favor of what we voted for on the first reading, and just leave it at that.
Okay.
But I'm okay if other people.
Okay, so the ordinance has been introduced as, as amended.
Mayor, to clarify, the, the action that we're talking about will be brought back in a resolution to amend their resolutions appointing. So we're just kind of explaining that. So it's the, there's no amendment necessary to the actual ordinance.
But this is second reading.
I understand.
Okay.
But, but the terms of the board members are set by their appointing resolution, and we're going to amend those resolutions in the future based on the understanding that, that's provided tonight.
Okay.
And you'll make this decision whether or not, if you want to give them the extra time at that time, not tonight.
At the time that they're.
It's not tonight. You're going to adopt this ordinance the way it is and was written and not affecting these other extensions at this time.
So voting yes on the second reading is voting yes to just vote what we already approved on the first reading?
Correct.
And we're not getting into that next step quite yet?
Not yet.
Not yet. But we will.
All right.
You will.
But we will. Let's bring this to a vote, because we got, we got, we got another, I have to, I have an add-on that I, I needed to bring on.
Okay, okay.
Go ahead.
An ordinance of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida amending the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida's Unified Land Development Regulations, article nine administration board specifically section 47-30, planning and zoning, and section 47-32, Historic Preservation Board to revise term of appointment on each board, providing for correction of scrivener's errors, providing for severability, providing for conflicts and repeal, and providing for an effective date. Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sterman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalles?
Yes. OSR two, second reading ordinance amending the City of Fort Lauderdale Code of Ordinances, chapter 14, regarding the flood plain management. No one signed up to speak? If there are no questions, someone like to introduce the ordinance?
Introduced.
Please call the roll.
An ordinance of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida amending chapter 14 flood plain management of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida by adopting new flood plain management regulations, revising existing flood plain management regulations and providing for applicability, repeal of conflicting ordinance provisions, codification, severability and effective date. Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sterman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalles?
Yes, and OSR two is now approved on the second reading. Greg, where are we with regard to the, the Lockhart Park? Where are the designs and, you know, where, what, what percent are we there? Because we, we have to extend the parking, and I want to make sure we're moving along with the park designs. Is there, is, is Carl here?
Actually, we should be due for an update shortly, I believe.
Yeah.
We're, we're expecting late January or early February, the.
For an update?
Yeah, I believe we're going to get north of the 30%. Or did we already do the 30%?
We did 30%.
We did 30.
We should get 60% in January.
Yeah, we should get the 60%.
Okay, all right. So their season starts in March, you know, I, I'm recommending to someone move that we give them the next season of parking, because we're not going to start construction before the end of their season, so.
I, I would make a motion that we continue with month-to-month with the city manager's sign-off, as long as we are moving forward and negotiating in, in good faith. I've already had former Mayor Seiler reach out to me about wanting to schedule mediation sessions. I told him I'd be happy to do that. So I, and I told him that I, I think we can do month-to-month, and as long as we are continuing to meet, I'm, you know, I think it's appropriate to continue to extend that so we can help the team meet their, their needs for the season.
The only problem with that is they, they need to be able to sell parking in advance, and they can't do that if they don't know if they have the parking.
So how about quarterly?
How about six months?
How about a year?
Well, let's just give them till the end of the season, John. I mean, what's the difference?
But, but then Mayor, I, you know, we, we've talked about this before. Last year, the, the singular thing that brought the team to the negotiating table was parking. So I don't want to give up, you know, the, the incentive that they have to work together with us in good faith to conclude a deal and get nothing in return.
Well, we know that we're going to get 60% design in a couple of months, so we are, I mean, they are working in good faith. They are moving forward.
The last thing that they said was they want us to pay for the park in its entirety, so I'm, I'm not getting good faith there.
Well.
If that's, if that's, if that's the good faith effort we're looking for, I'm, I'm not entirely there.
Will someone introduce?
I just did. I introduced month-to-month.
Okay.
Month-to-month is just not good business sense for anyone, for us or them. We get a, we get a revenue sharing in the parking, correct?
Yeah.
So why would we want to cut off our nose to spite our face?
Well, we continue to get revenue sharing whether we're month-to-month or whether it's for the full year.
You can't, you can't plan with all those season ticket holders on a month-to-month basis for parking. They can't operate that way, and it doesn't make sense for us. By the way, I'm just wondering, like, when was the last mediation session? Anyone know?
Well, the next one is, I think, after the holidays.
That wasn't my question. When was the last one?
The, the last one was after we came to an agreement with them, and when I had spoken with Mayor Seiler, the discussion was that we would wait till after the holidays and pick it up now, which is about where we are. And again, as I said, I had a conversation with him, an informal one, a couple of weeks ago, and he said that, that we needed to get, get restarted on this. I agree completely. And in fact, I had a conversation with the city attorney's office, because one of the things that I want to do is, before we get into mediation again, I think it's important that we, as a body, sit down and have a discussion about what the parameters are that we think is appropriate. As you recall, the team is looking for us to shoulder their cost of their demolition, which is outside the comprehensive agreement, so that's a point of contention. And we also have certain enumerated items in the comprehensive agreement that they are responsible for in relation to the park. We have had our 30% design. We're moving forward to 60% design. We are costing out those elements for which the team is contractually obligated to pay for as separate and distinct from those options which we have added in, which are going to be covered out of the parks bond. So I think when we get those numbers, that's something that the team has disputed. They have offered up a, an amount towards those costs that are not reflective of what AECOM has developed to this point in time. And so before I sit down and start negotiating, just like we do with collective bargaining, I think we need to establish where my negotiating leash is.
Okay, so can I make a suggestion? We have to be business smart about this, too. Why don't we give a six-month extension and then, and then up for review in 90 days, and then we can determine, you know, if we're going to extend it past six months, and that way we'll have a lot, you'll have more mediation done, we'll have our, the design consultants coming back with 60% design. So if all those things are flowing right, then we can, we can reconsider to extend it past the six months to finish off their season. I think that provides incentives for them as well as making business sense for both parties, because we do get a cut.
Say that again, Mayor. Say you said, you said six months with a 90-day review. So, so if we get to 90 days and we're not making progress, do we cancel?
No, 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 it'll stay at six months, but it won't be extended till the end of the year. They have, their, 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 their season goes to the end of the year.
Right, the season goes to the end of the year.
Right, so we won't extend it past the six months if we don't think they're acting in good faith after a 90-day review. I think that makes more sense.
I think it's excessive, but, and again, in a, in a spirit of goodwill around the holidays.
Okay, thank you, Santa. Okay.
Mayor, I have a question.
Yep.
My recollection might be off, but I remember having a discussion about parking a while ago. I thought it was the consensus, actually, it was more than just a consensus of the commission, that we would give in Miami a year of parking in 2024, because we, this, I'm pretty sure is in the minutes. Correct me if I'm wrong, someone, but I remember that we did agree that the city manager had the authority to just extend it through 2024, and we all agreed.
No, no, actually, we said we would consider an extension for the next year based on making progress on the negotiations. What, what we said is that if we are moving forward together, again, in a spirit of partnership and collaboration, that we could make next year available to them, because we will probably take the better part of the next 10 months to get through design and permitting. And so we could even hold off beyond that, because I would, you know, like to make it possible for them to finish their season. We may be done in nine months, but I don't want to forestall the end of their season. I'm willing to say, even if we're, even if we're done with design and permitting in less time, you know, I am amenable to waiting until the end of the year till the season is fully complete before we begin construction. And during this time, I want to wrap up designing and permitting, and I want to get a contract out to bid and get a, get a contractor under, under contract, so that when their season is over, we're ready to put a shovel in the ground and start demoing.
All right, so why don't we just give them the nine months then?
No, six months is fine, Mayor. I'm with you on that.
No, no, but no.
No, because I want to make sure that we're, we need to be making progress, Mayor, and so far we have not been making progress.
Okay.
So I need to see progress, Mayor.
I, Mayor, I, I was talking, but I, my question was, again, I don't remember all those conditions. Maybe at some point in time, I'd like to see those minutes.
I don't remember, I don't remember giving the city manager the authority. I have to be honest with you.
I do. I mean, does someone have a recollection of this, or is it just me that's remembering this? But.
You all said till the end of this year, which then becomes 24.
But we didn't give you the authority to extend in 2024?
Just, just the end of.
We said nothing about 2024?
No.
Nothing?
No.
That's not my recollection, but okay. I understand.
Okay, so there's a motion on the floor. Do I hear a second?
What is it again, exactly?
So the motion is to extend it for six more months with a review after 90 days?
I'll second, I'll second. Wait, can I just hear the rest of the, sorry.
So.
With a review after 90 days?
Mayor, are we talking about rates with respect to the extension, or just that the city manager will negotiate new rates? What's, what's the?
I think we should let the city manager, as long as they're consistent with what we've been getting.
Well, I'd like to see it go up. The, the parking is worth more now with Messi playing, so I'd like to see us generate a little more.
That's why I wanted to go with the whole nine months.
Well, hopefully Messi lasts for the entire season, you know, he may or may not. But, no, I, I do think, you know, I, I understand from folks at a parking up there that, you know, parking resales have become rather expensive, so I'm hoping that the city manager, when he sits down with the team, can get a somewhat more generous parking arrangement, because you remember, the original parking arrangements were done before Messi came on board and ticket prices exploded. So I'd rather see a more, you know.
All right, we can leave that at the discretion of the city manager.
Okay.
But I want to.
Mayor, I'm sorry, we're at the 10 o'clock hour where you need to extend, unfortunately.
It's 10 o'clock?
Motion to extend for 15 minutes?
Sorry.
I wasn't expecting a walk-on, so.
Second, second. Please call, please call the roll.
We didn't quite finish what this was.
We're extending the meeting.
Oh, just for the meeting? Thank you.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalles?
Yes, okay. The meeting's extended till 10:15. So just to finish what I was saying, my suggestion was I'd like someone to move that we extend it for six months, and then a review as to whether or not to extend it to the balance of the season with, at 90 days, to determine whether or not we've made progress with the negotiations on the disputed items. Make sense?
Yes.
Okay. Does someone make that motion?
So moved.
Okay. Do I hear a second? Warren?
Second.
Okay. It's called the roll.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalles?
Yes. Any further business of the commission, Mr. City Manager? All right. Merry Christmas to everybody, Happy New Year, Happy Kwanzaa. Hope everyone returns to the commission in good health. Meeting adjourned.
Hope everyone returns to the commission.